Good evening, welcome to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. Special meeting Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen for seven thirty, room three fifteen. I'd like to call the meeting to order and let's first order of business is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business, like to introduce all of our commissioners to my far right, Jamie Hein, who will be voting today, Commissioner Jeff Kohan, James Fitzsimmons, who will be acting as our vice chair, Stephen Allenson, who will be acting as secretary, and Chair JP Vanoyt. To my far left is Amy Torrey. Recording secretary is Cindy Kleiss. And to my far, far right is Rob Baltramitis. Welcome. So, first order of business is approval of the October tenth, two thousand and eighteen minutes. Are there any questions, comments? If not, call for motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commissioner approved the minutes of the October tenth meeting has submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries. Thank you. First order of business, our first one is a public hearing, special permit warehouse and office, five research parkway, Wallingford LLC, five research parkway, application four one one dash one eight. Can I ask the secretary to please read the public notice and also all correspondence that we have?
Special permit warehouse and offices, five research parkway, Wallingford, Connecticut, Wallingford LLC, five research parkway, number four one one dash one eight. A memorandum from Corporation Council to James Vitale, received October third, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence from Rob Baltramitis to Inland Wetlands, received October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, received October nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence from Aaron O'Hare, our environmental planner, to Michelle Carlson, dated October nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence to Aaron O'Hare, our environmental planner, from BL Companies, received October twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Memorandum from Tony Buchieri, General Manager of the Electric Division, to the Planning and Zoning Department, received October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence to Michelle Carlson and associated attachments from Brian Diop, from Terricon Consultants, received October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. A down study from Terricon, addressed to Michelle Carlson, dated October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Document titled Suggested Conditions of Approval, dated October eleventh, two thousand and Correspondence from Michael Pettange, excuse me if I get that name wrong, from Abel Womack to the Planning and Zoning Commission, received November first, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence to Planning and Zoning and Inland Wetland Commissions from Jack Arigoni, received October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, to Casey Hand, dated November second, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence from Aaron O'Hare, our environmental planner, to Michelle Carlson, dated October twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Inter-departmental referral, dated November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, signed by the Fire Marshal. Correspondence from Brian Freeman to Casey Hand, Town Planner, received November seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Memorandum from Janice Small, Corporation Council, to James Vitale and the Inland Wetlands Commission. Memorandum, received November seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence from Tom and Louise Labutis to James Vitale and Aaron O'Hare and the Inland Wetlands Commission, received November sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence and attachments, received November first, addressed to Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, from Michelle Carlson at BL Companies. Correspondence to Robert Baltramitis, received October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, from Michelle Carlson at BL Companies. Bound comments from BL Companies, addressed to Rob Baltramitis, received October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Aaron O'Hare, dated November ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence to Rob Baltramitis from Sherat Kaluri, dated November seventh, two thousand and eighteen. And correspondence from Tom and Louise Labutis to Amy Torrey and the Planning and Zoning Commission, received November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I think that might be everything.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. There we go.
Excuse me, I stand corrected. A land use review, addressed to James Seikter, Chairman, from Rob Baltramitis, dated November ninth, two thousand and eighteen. And that's, I think, it.
Sure, you're good? All right. Just some housekeeping. I did neglect to say that special permit material storage yard, Town of Wallingford Electric Division, two-two-eight East Street, application four-one-three-one-eight was withdrawn, so we will not be hearing that as a public hearing. So, just wanted to let everybody know also, old business, site plan, accessory apartment, Thorpe one hundred Chimney Hill Road, application two-one-three dash one-eight was also withdrawn, so we will not be hearing those tonight. Sorry about that. You have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. For your record again, my name is Dennis Sanaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sanaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner and applicant, five research parkway, Wallingford LLC. With me to my left is Michelle Carlson, who's the team project engineer from BL Companies. To her left, Kevin Kilgus, who is also an engineer at BL Companies. We have Mr. Chairman and Commissioners in the audience, Fred Greenberg, who's a traffic engineer, has prepared the traffic report mentioned in your record from BL Companies. Also Brian Op, who's our geotechnical engineer from Terricon, James Griswold, hydrogeologist from Terricon. And we have Jim Manley and other representatives of the owner present to answer any questions you might have. As you recall, I'm sure, we made the presentation of the site plan application portion last month. There were questions that arose after that meeting, and we're going to address those tonight for you. You may recall that we're here under a special permit application. We're here because we met the threshold from a parking perspective, clearly our use is a permitted use in the IX zone. And, you know, based upon recognizing some of the history of this commission, when we submit our application, we told Ms. Hand that we were agreeable to having the town hire its own independent traffic reviewer to review our traffic report, so that there wouldn't be a waste of time, and knowing that that probably would be something this commission would want to have for a project of this nature. And of course, I think you know that that has occurred, that in fact, the town has retained the services of the gentleman sitting next to your town engineer, Rob Baltramitis. I know that the town engineer has presented his memorandum dated November ninth. It addresses all the issues of an engineering perspective, and he has set forth certain conditions of approval, and other than one modest tweak that he and I discussed, and I think he's fine with it as the condition number eight, I think the information in that land use review from Mr. Baltramitis is thorough and consistent with what we've been saying over the past month to this commission and several months to the Wetlands Commission. You'll note that there is discussion about the storm water management, often a major concern, always a major concern for this commission. That's been looked at by four separate engineers, both the applicant and an independent peer review engineer was hired by the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, reviewed the plan, Mr. Kruger from Water and Sewer and Mr. Baltramitis from Engineering, and all have concluded the same thing, that the plan works, and I think it works well. There's no negative impacts on downgrade in conditions as noted in that memorandum. When we spoke last month, of course, one of the key issues that this commission had, and some of the members of the public, was traffic. So, Mr. Chairman, without being presumptuous, it may be prudent to have your peer reviewer give you his read on our submission.
Sounds good.
Good evening, my name is Sherat Kaluri. I'm a senior traffic engineer with CDM Smith. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut and a licensed professional traffic operations engineer. Let me go back to early October, when we got involved to do the peer review on this project. And our first letter that came out on October fifth, addressed to Mr. Baltramitis, was really looking at the site plan, looking at the traffic analysis that was presented as part of the study, the early study that was submitted by the applicant. And we have a five-page letter, I just, I would want to kind of hit the highlights on that. We had several comments. The comments related to identifying a study area for this project, looking at the site plan, also looking at the amount of parking that was on site, kind of compared to the warehouse, the use that's being proposed here, looking at the traffic light on Research Parkway. I know probably ten, twelve years ago, I was involved with the Bristol Myers project, I was involved with the expansion of Bristol Myers, and you know, the light was put into serve Bristol Myers. So, certainly looking at the site and the amount of generation that the site would have, there was a situation that could arise, is that light may not be needed in the future. So, we looked at that feasibility in Carpenter Lane, which is one of the big topics here, looking at access from Carpenter Lane, and why there was a split access between Research Parkway and Carpenter Lane, and the concern of the sightlines on Carpenter Lane. I think the original go-around, the applicant was proposing an always stop sign at the end of the traffic study, so we looked at that, we looked at ISDs, which is intersection side distance from both driveways. So, we had several comments in our October fifth letter, and since then, we had conversations with the applicant's team, we had some specific concerns, and on October thirty-first, we did receive the report from BL Companies, looking at all the comments that we had provided to them. We pretty much agreed and kind of concurred on a lot of the responses that were presented to us, related to the traffic circulation, related to traffic impact. But there are a couple of issues that Mr. Baltramitis and I talked about, and that we still, we had some questions more than anything else, related to one about Carpenter Lane. The proposal to look at the profile on Carpenter Lane, and even cutting about five feet of the payment, which may result in some kind of impacts to adjacent properties, seems pretty severe, and I don't know how the applicant was going to address that issue in terms of property rights. And I see a plan behind you, but certainly look at what the impacts might be to those properties, it might be affected because of that five-foot cut that they're proposing on the profile. So that's one comment or question we still have, and hopefully the applicant will respond to that today. And the other thing we suggested to the commission, that a condition we put in, that when building number two on Research Parkway gets fully occupied, that there be a traffic warrant analysis done, just to see if the traffic light is still needed at that intersection. So, so those are the two things that were more suggestions or comments that came out up here, but other than that, we've looked at the other aspects of the study, and the applicant has addressed our comments. With that, I'm ready to take any questions, if you have any.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of our consultant?
Yes, Mr. Heinze. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you say whether the traffic light is still warranted, you're referring to the traffic light at the intersection of Research Parkway and Route sixty-eight?
I should have classed it, no, I'm looking at the intersection of Research Parkway, the side driveway.
Okay.
On Research Parkway, which is really served by Bristol Myers, today, was served by Bristol Myers.
Okay. And then my other question is, can you go into some detail as to what your thoughts are regarding truck traffic? So, right now at Bristol Myers, you know, you don't have as much truck traffic. With these warehouses, the type of traffic is going to change drastically, so you're going to have a lot more trucks and not, you know, sedans and SUVs. How does, how do you see that changing the traffic flow in that area under these plans?
So, one of our comments in our earlier view was the separated driveways. We did see that the applicant was proposing two separate buildings, and then each of the driveways had separate diversions for trucks, especially the one in Carpenter Lane. There were two driveways very close to each other, one mainly for truck traffic, the other one for the employee slash customer parking. We expressed some concern because of the proximity. Typically driveways that close to each other are not warranted, or should be put that close to each other because there's conflicts, there's certainly maybe a confusion between people, which is a truck driver, and you don't want the trucks to U-turn if they can't find the right driveway. We had some discussions with them, I guess, given the site constraints and the concerns that they have, they had to separate with their customers, the customers are going to use the site, they had to separate the two driveways. So, they have done, from a geometric standpoint, one of the things we looked at was their turning radiuses and their templates. I think they have taken some preventive measures to not allow any truck traffic to turn right on Carpenter Lane. Most of the truck traffic is intended to go towards Research Parkway. On the other driveway, which is on Research Parkway, that goes up to the building number two, they have a pretty secretive route to go up to that hill on top of building number two, so we had some concerns on that. And I think the applicant looked to that, the best of their knowledge. I mean, ideally, we would like to see a combined driveway, if possible, but I guess, given the type of clientele they're looking at here, they're limited to having two separate driveways and two separate access points.
And a little more to the point, do you see there being any traffic issues out on Research Parkway or on Route sixty-eight as a result of there being more trucks as opposed to cars coming out of this property?
So, when they did the traffic analysis, in the original analysis, there was, in the traffic analysis for methodology, there's a percent that we apply to account for truck traffic that is going to come to the site, and it was adjusted upwards in the latter part of the analysis. So, the report that came out on the thirty-first factored in high truck percent coming in from a level of service perspective. I think overall, this project is not a level of service related issue, it's more the truck flows and turns and the confusions entering the driveways, it's more of a site plan circulation type thing. Going back to your question about coming in from ninety-one and going into the site, we don't see a lot of issues. I think at all, when the site really gets fully developed, where the tenant happens to be, we'll probably see some distribution of truck traffic during the course of the day, and it may not be an overlap with the peak traffic that's on Research Parkway, because of the type of nature of businesses. So, there might be some benefits there versus Bristol Myers, which used to peak in the morning and the afternoon rush hours, there was defined few, when people were used to enter and exit the property. Here you may possibly see some spreading of that truck traffic, not as intense as you would see it.
Another question I had is that, right now, you don't have any traffic from that location that comes out onto Carpenter and up towards High Hill. With this plan, you're going to have a large parking lot with a driveway that's coming out onto Carpenter. And granted, you know, the hope is, and I think the intention is, that we're not going to have tractor trailers going up Carpenter towards High Hill. But you are going to have potentially sedan, you know, all the other cars that are parked there. Did you look at that at all, and what effect that that may have on traffic on Carpenter and High Hill?
Yes, so the traffic study that was done, that was one of the comments we had early on, on the early study, we didn't have a good sense of what the traffic pattern or distribution would be of traffic exiting Carpenter, on Carpenter Lane, knowing that the applicant has suggested or indicated in their plans that they're going to prohibit any traffic into residential streets, especially High Hill. So, they since analyzed that driveway, those patterns, assuming a lot of that traffic would be on the Carpenter to Research, not towards the other side. But also, they have taken measures on the driveway itself, to funnel traffic towards Research, not towards High Hill. So, certainly, we can't say there's going to be no one doing that, there's going to be some people doing it, but it's certainly not going to be trucks, but there may be some people who try to cut across. But the intent is to really put traffic on Research Parkway.
Okay, and so you're, would it be fair to say that you're comfortable with their plans regarding trying to divert traffic towards Research Parkway as opposed to High Hill?
I think they have done what can be done on the side driveway aspect of it, to divert traffic to Research Parkway. Will it happen when the site gets built? I mean, it should not, because of the channelization that they have done on the driveway, but there may be a few stragglers if that may happen, but it's very hard to depict the type of client they're going to get, to build, or tenant they're going to get to build that building, and really knowing what kind of patterns would evolve from there at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions? Mr. Kohan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll just follow up on Jamie's kind of line of questioning. Quite honestly, I, you know, maybe we'll find out later this evening, but we still don't know what the hours of operation are going to be for the warehouse. So, I think that's really a key for, you know, the traffic. And, you know, one of the, you know, I went through the report, and, you know, basically you're comparing, you know, current or older Bristol Myers traffic with, you know, expected, you know, truck traffic, and it's, you know, going to be less than, you know, what was peak at Bristol Myers. But my question, and again, you know, based on the hours of operation, you know, if it's nine o'clock on a rush hour, you know, that is a very congested area. And, you know, one of my questions was that, you know, if I'm stopped at a traffic light next to an eighteen-wheel, you know, truck, you know, the light turns green, you know, five cars go past that tractor trailer before it even gets out on the road, you know, does that scenario, you know, factor into some of these calculations for, you know, this new warehouse? And, you know, how do you, you know, factor that into, you know, your traffic plan? And, you know, before you answer that, based on, you know, the site itself, and again, we don't know the hours of operation, and, you know, I think that's really a key piece of information. I think that intersection will handle, you know, the expected truck traffic, but, you know, taking a left onto Research, you know, could be problematic in the mornings. So, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what that calculation is for comparing that type of, you know, truck at a dead stop before he makes that turn, you know, how many trucks are you going to get through that traffic light in the morning?
So, let me take your first question related to how does the traffic be generated for something like this? So, we have, I'm pretty sure Mr. Greenberg has probably said that in his past presentation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is our resource for guidance that we use for trip generation, has different land uses in it, and one of them is warehouse. And basically, that generation factors in how much of traffic that's generated on a typical peak hour, and certainly there's an overlap between the peak hour of the site versus the peak hour of the generator, of peak hour of the traffic that's on the street. So, that's accounted for in there. Related to a specific situation, how when a truck is turning from, let's say, sixty-eight onto Research Parkway, when we do the traffic analysis, the traffic analysis reflects, as I was indicating prior, that there are some percents of trucks that are factored into each of the movements. And that factoring of trucks accounts for the turns, if you have, let's say, ten vehicles making a turn, and there are twenty percent of them are trucks, then those two trucks that are on the ten cars are factored into that signal cycle. So, every intersection has a cycle, it addresses certain movements, and the trucks kind of progress to that. Obviously, traffic flow is very random, it's not, you can't predict when cars are going to come, when trucks are going to intersection. So, there may be some cycles during the peak hour, you may see situations where you'll see more trucks than normal, you may not see the twenty percent while, you may see more trucks. But related to what you may see now with less traffic making that left turn onto Research Parkway because of the lower amount of generation. Parkway because of the lower amount of generation with the warehouses. Having said that, and that kind of relates to that signal warrant analysis somewhat, because it's important, when Bristol Myers was there, in the mornings, you had that double left turn that was instituted on sixty-eight to have all the traffic on two lanes, and then have them right onto Bristol Myers driveway. With the smaller amount of volume coming into the site, and looking at how the traffic is gonna flow into the site, it's important to know what the site is gonna look like when it's fully opened, and that's the whole reason is to really know this tenant that the warehouse is anticipated to be is really what the ITE is saying. So, so I think that kind of factors into some of that analysis.
Um, okay, I'm not sure I got a clear answer, but, you know, I'm, you know, wondering where the truck traffic is gonna be coming from, whether it's, you know, ninety-one South, ninety-one North, both of those exit ramps are fairly short. So, you know, again, depending on the hours of operation, you know, that could be problematic for the morning commute. And, and then just, you know, my last question is, you know, again, on Carpenter Lane, I think, you know, the last meeting, we were fairly concerned about, you know, traffic exiting onto Carpenter Lane, and that, not just, I think, the, you know, truck traffic, but, you know, just vehicles driving onto the site, and based on the, you know, sightlines, I think, you know, we still, me personally, still have a concern with, you know, use, using that entrance and exit on, on Carpenter Lane, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate, I, I think I'm gonna pick up from the prior two speakers, and I certainly thank you for being here representing Wallingford, obviously, as per the regulations at the applicant's expense. Talking about the October thirty-one response from BL Companies addressed to Rob Ultra Midas, issue number one, you had questioned the reasonableness of the study area presented in the traffic analysis, quoting the letter, "Is inconclusive as to no assignment of site-generated traffic along adjacent roadways or intersections is provided." And you asked that the consultant should submit a trip assignment study along roadways and a key intersection to validate the reasonableness of the study areas. Their answer right below indicates that they used, quote, "based upon the historical counts at the Bristol Myers driveway." So, again, you're, you're the expert in traffic, a warehouse facility is different than a corporate research facility, correct? So, similar to what Mr. Cohen raised, it's, it's predominantly truck traffic based upon the intended use and the requested use of the, the site, whereas people who were working at the Bristol Myers facility might have taken the back roads back to the shoreline in Connecticut, take, going on sixty-eight. So they, the way they distributed the traffic, is, is that answer acceptable to you?
Well, based on, if we had done a study ourselves, based on how we would distribute the traffic, our intent would be to put more of the traffic towards major highways. So I think they're talking about looking at seventy-five to eighty percent of the traffic oriented towards sixty-eight and ninety-one, so we might probably have a little bit more of a skew towards night eighty, uh, towards sixty-eight and ninety-one, not knowing exactly how the patterns would be, and typically knowing that the truck traffic would be oriented towards those, those two highways, more than coming towards Carpenter Lane or going up Research Parkway. We would use data that's out there to really understand what the flow of the traffic would be. So in terms of Bristol Myers and the warehouse are not gonna be exactly the same in terms of distribution, but people generally tend to orient themselves towards expressway, and especially truck traffic, it's really coming to serve the warehouse, would be oriented towards the highway. So in here, the eight, the eighty percent of the ninety percent is, is the best assumption or guesstimate you can make based on where your highways are, and looking at the traffic pattern that you have near the site.
Okay. The manual that you refer to, that, that the internet, the traffic engineers use as the source for, you know, warehousing, and this is acceptable, is there a separate category in that manual for a, a facility such as a FedEx?
Not specifically FedEx or shipping companies, but they do have manufacturing, and then they have warehouse use. So, so they don't have any specific, like, they have post office, but it's not really FedEx, so.
It, the reason I ask is, I mean, I, I think you're, we're here in Wallingford, we do have a rather large FedEx facility on the outskirts, and I, it happens to be on my drive out of town to work, and in the morning, I see nothing but, you know, FedEx vehicles, and I know in the evening, the same thing. So I know from all the response and everything I've read prior to this, we don't know the tenant. If this site was broken up into multiple tenants, would that impact the traffic?
It potentially could.
Is, is there any accommodation for that in this, in, in your peer review of their study?
So there's really one use in the site, so that's the warehouse use, and that's kind of one of the unknowns we had way early on in the study was the amount of parking that's out there versus the building that's being proposed here. So, again, in conversations with the client, it's our understanding that they don't have a good knowledge of the tenant currently, but based on what they would foresee, they, they probably will know a better sense of it when the tenant is occupied, and that's the whole reason for, again, I go back to the signal horn analysis, so.
Right.
So that's important because the signal is out there, it's good for the site, but is it warranted? And that's, it's a big issue if it's not warranted and still operational.
All right, and then I guess the other, the other question, if I might, give me one second, please. If I understood correctly, the justification of the traffic control signal at the site driveway, if I understood, I'm trying to find it here, it talks about waiting for Warehouse Two to be up and functioning, did I, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, and again, resident of the town, commissioner of the commi- commissioner on the commission, that, that it's acceptable to say that the signal warrant analysis would only be done after, if approved, only after operational, and only after half of the facility is completed. Why, why wouldn't it be done sooner? Or, i- i- if I understood correctly, because it, if I understood correctly, the, the light is there now.
Right.
With Bristol Myers gone by the end of the year.
Right.
Whether or not the light would be justified is, is outside this purview, correct? If I understand from my conversations with Mr. Balter Midas?
So the justification of the light is based on how much traffic will it generate on the driveway itself after Bristol Myers is gone, and this building two is fully occupied, because there's no access from building one into building two. So, so really, knowing what would go into building two, and when it's occupied to a level that it can support that light. And typically, the town has, this is a town signal, so the town has jurisdiction over the light, but also it's regulated by Connecticut DOT, because they have the purview of telling the town to remove a traffic light if, if needed, if, if they don't meet the warrants.
And, and just, just to be clear, I, I don't envy you sitting in that seat, because I, you're, but your peer review is just reviewing their study, you didn't do your own traffic study. And, and I've sat up here a few years, all traffic studies are only concerned with peak hour traffic, correct?
Mostly, I mean, there's some, some that do look at off-peak, and again, it only happens when there's a significant variation, and I go back to the earlier commissioner's comment about hours of operation, so.
Right.
Um, really, it's very subjective right now in terms of what the tenant is and what the hours of operation, so let's say this is going to be like something where there's an employee base that comes in different shifts, like if it's a hospital, for say, you're gonna have different peak conditions. So it's typically not an A and P and peak situation, if this was a hospital, there would be other hours of the day that we looked at too, because of shift changes. So, so again, it all depends on who the occupant is, is at the site.
Right, okay, thank you very much, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple quick questions.
Sure.
And I apologize, you likely addressed it in your study, you may have addressed it earlier, there's a lot of folks here, so I may be doubling up on, on some things you've already answered.
That's fine.
You had mentioned earlier that you preferred combining the driveway on Carpenter. What I'm looking at on the map is it looks like there is an exit for the tractor trailers to go, I, I call it left, onto Carpenter, which would be towards Research Parkway, and then there's another driveway for the parking lot of four hundred and eighty-six spaces to go either left onto Carpenter towards Research, or right onto Carpenter towards High Hill. When you say combined driveway would be preferred, did you mean combining those, or what do you mean by that?
So, a couple of, the combining of the, both the driveways and carpenters preferred, because they're too close to each other, and they're conflicting. Also, in this case, even combining the access to the both buildings would be preferable, again, knowing the tenants and knowing how these buildings are set up to serve a future customer or a future tenant. Our conversation with the applicant was it's with the use that they have there, they have to keep the two types of vehicles separate, cars and trucks being separate. We had discussions about it, we said they should be combined rather than separate, separate, but the way the access is designed for, trucks can't use, apparently trucks can't use one driveway to access both points, and they have to use, they have to be gated, so they control access for the trucks separately than the cars. So really, that ca- poses a challenge in terms of in and out. The confusion is the truck might miss its, miss, miss its entrance point and go past the entrance point and turn around, and, or back out on Carpenter Lane because it can't turn around. Similar thing could happen on the driveway on, for building number two, where there's a split between the cars and the trucks, and the trucks would have to climb this hairpin bend type of road going up. So that was, the concern is, well, one is to split vehicle or traffic between two driveways serving the same building, and then also possibly looking at combining access for both buildings, and talking to the applicant, both were not practical or feasible based on the tenant they are anticipating to have.
Was there any discussion about combining them or arranging it in such a way so that all of the ingress and egress for both the trucks and the vehicle, and the cars were, were onto Research at all? Or to, to have it go directly to Research, or did you just review based on the application to empty onto Ca- Carpenter?
So, based in our, based in, before my involvement, and based my discussion with Mr. Balter Midas and the applicant, there were some conversations prior to us getting involved in the study regarding trying to combine driveways and looking at one access point on Research Parkway, which would have been a preferable option if there was a way to do it, and if they were combined buildings like Bristol Myers was, like one, one unit, but based on what we've heard, they're potentially looking at two separate tenants, and they're looking at two separate access points for the buildings. So that's kind of the concern here, is the, the plan for the site is such that accommodates future tenants.
Okay. Was there any discussion about how to prevent the cars coming, taking that right onto Carpenter and going down towards High Hill Road as opposed to just heading down towards Research? Did you have any discussions about that?
Uh, we had looked at the site plan, we had commented, like, trucks trying to, potentially trying to make a right turn towards Carpenter, the potential for cars trying to make a right turn on Carpenter towards High Hill. They were, they suggested putting some measures out there to not allow cars to turn right, although, you know, cars are more prone to make the right turn versus the trucks are. The trucks, the truck exit is much more channelized to make that turn, and the intent for that driveway, for the cars is not to make the right turn, but it's, again, as I answered earlier, there's a potential that someone might make a right turn, but the, the intent is not to allow that movement.
Um, in your study, the, um, the light from sixty-eight to Research, there's a, it's actually a really unique traffic signal that's up there because it changes.
Right.
At nine AM, and so it goes from having two left turn, turn lanes to having one left turn and one straight, and then the far right lane is always a straight.
Right.
Right away. Was there any discussion about the impact of that light on how the traffic flow would, would occur, and whether changing the timing of that light, or looking into changing the timing of that light would assist in traffic flow?
So we did have a comment regarding that specific operation, when I was involved with the Bristol Myers project, we had warranted or suggested that type of an arrangement because of the amount of traffic that was coming into Bristol Myers, and especially what the inside of that lane towards the shoulder was essentially Bristol Myers traffic, because everyone makes a left, stays on the right lane, and gets into the Bristol Myers site. Obviously, with this condition, it's very hard to predict right now in terms of what that use is going to be in building number two. So that was recommended to be looked at when the site is, you know, fully occupied, along with the warrant analysis, so timing it maybe have to be adjusted. The intersection is currently functioning on some kind of a loop system that allows traffic to sit, accommodate movements as the demand occurs, so that timing will get adjusted as the traffic patterns change.
In, in your experience, because I, I don't know, let's say, there was a tenant for, on day one, how long would it take to make the application, do the study, and get whatever changed to that light before the traffic issue would be adjusted?
Um, usually, something like that, one that when the tenant is fully occupied, we would, especially the traffic signal warrant analysis would be done after full occupancy, we get the results of the study, and Mr. Balter Midas would receive that and would make a recommendation, looking at that study, whether the signal is still warranted. Once, if the signal is not warranted, the town can make a petition to remove that signal, work with DOT, because they kind of control the permit for that signal, because they can regulate a lot of the permitting process for the town signals, so they would work with the DOT, or the town would work with the DOT, and, and that's where, it's a fairly straight process in terms of, the big thing is to make sure that the warrant analysis is done for all hours of the day, and it requires typically eight hours of the day in a typical day, weekday, to have satisfied all the warrants and see if the signal is really meeting those warrants.
But really, if any change needed to occur, it would be up to DOT as far as the timing and when they got to it?
Yeah, yeah, and also, Mr. Balter Midas just added that once the town submits, it, it usually takes, you know, six to twelve months, maybe even sooner, sometimes, depending on how busy the DOT is in terms of reading the application.
Sure, sure. I think that's it for now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I generally agree with all the comments and the questions, you know, I, I guess the, the one that, there's really two, I mean, hours of operation is, is, is a challenge, not knowing when it is, but turning right onto Carpenter Lane, I, I know we're looking at, just kind of in that general area, but you have four hundred and eighty-eight cars, a good chunk could turn right down to Carpenter Lane, shoot down High, I think it's High Street, High Hill, sorry, and.
They all live there.
I know, they're all, and then the stop sign sitting there, you know, on sixty-eight, so how, that, that's pretty significant traffic in that area. What are some of the ways, I, I guess from, the, the study really doesn't address that other than how, you know, I didn't see anything in the study that really addresses that going that far past.
Um, I think related to the site traffic itself in terms of how they're gonna exit and enter Car- the site driveway from Carpenter Lane, is, is, is kind of regulated by the signage and the directionality that's provided to this tenant, and it's, it's difficult to say that some cars may pass that point and go towards sixty-eight that way, but certainly the intent is. But certainly the intent is to really regulate the traffic within the site to keep it that way in within the side driveways. The intent is not to put traffic towards High Hill Rain. And I think in terms of traffic flow, we've seen when projects get developed and get approved and, you know, people do tend to do different things. It's very hard to predict what the patterns of people would be. This time, we're based on what the applicant is proposing. Their intent is to keep the traffic off of that area.
Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Excuse me, something you said, just thought about this. So talking about truck traffic and the control of truck traffic. And, you know, Wallingford has a Walmart. And Walmart runs their own trucks, so they can control that traffic. And it seems most people don't know in Route Five is a separate truck entrance right off of Route Five because it's the back of the store. It's the trucks use it. It works because they control their trucks. Not knowing the tenant, not knowing the operations, not knowing who's going to be driving the trucks, we have no assurance that we would be able to control, they would be able to control truck traffic. Is a statement, not a question. Does that, but is that, if I make it in the form of a question, isn't that reality?
It is a reality. I mean, I think it's very hard to say how, I mean, they certainly have a better handle, one they get a tenant to know who the tenant is and how they can control the, if this is a true warehouse, how the distribution could be controlled. But at this point, it's more of a prediction than a reality of how the truck traffic would come in and out.
And if I might, that's, I think that's why my question before I asked you if there's a separate category for something like a FedEx. Is a FedEx truck, is a FedEx truck, is a FedEx truck, whether it's in Wallingford or Walla Washington. I mean, they control the trucks, they control the traffic. I mean, it's to their benefit as a business to make sure, but yeah.
Unfortunately, the IP doesn't have anything called the FedEx operations.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners to our travel consultant? Thank you very much. Continue.
Thank you. Chairman, just a couple of clarifications on the questions and answers that just gone forward. A couple of things. Number one is let's talk about Carpenter Lane. I think you know and understood your peer reviewer that as far as the truck traffic is concerned, there is a, the way the driveway is to be physically constructed, it would preclude vehicles from taking a right, trucks taking a right out of that driveway. And then there's a slide here to show you what, how that movement would be. You'd have to actually go across the lane. It just, it's virtually impossible to take a right. No one would want to take a right. No truck would want to take a right. It would be foolish. And so there's geometric restrictions to make certain, along with requisite signage, to make sure that all trucks will take a left down to Research. As far as that vehicle driveway a little further east, that, my client had no problem with it being restricted to a left out only. So the cars wouldn't go up Carpenter, take a right and go up to High Hill. As a matter of fact, I think one of our discussions, we thought anybody who took a right, went up to Carpenter on High Hill to try to go home would only do it once. They never want to do it again. So, but, but without trying to be facetious, the end of the day would be, you would take a, you could geometrically do the same thing with that driveway to make certain that all the track, the vehicle, car vehicle movements are left. And that, that certainly doesn't, it's not an issue with the applicant. So in terms of vehicles taking a right out of, automobiles taking a right out of the Carpenter driveway, that was, we were, we were advised that that wasn't an issue. But if it is, obviously, we don't have a problem with limiting it to a left-hand turn. In terms of, you know, hours of operation, again, we don't have a tenant. This is not a tenant-driven project. It is a project based upon the needs of, you know, e-commerce and those potential uses that you see throughout the state. There are a number of communities that have approved developments of this size and larger or similar sized. And it's all designed to find, the way the system works is you have to have your approvals in order to generate a tenant. It doesn't go the other way around. You don't have a tenant come to you and say, build us a building. They need the approvals first, which puts us in the chicken and egg situation based on some of your questions. So we don't have a tenant. We can't tell you who the tenant is. But we do know that the IX zone permits this use, that your roadway system is designed. I mean, when you created this IX zone, not you personally, but some of you may be personally, when the town did this, they created a zone allowing these uses. They had a very wide Research Parkway. And there was a recognition that the uses that are permitted, you know, would take place. This is where you want your warehousing. This is where you're saying it's the IX zone. It's what's permitted. Matter of fact, interestingly, those uses that were previously permitted in the IX zone, such as institutional facilities, that might not have had significant truck traffic have been removed from this zone. You've made it certain that that's not what you want here. And I say you, I meant the town of Wallingford. But, you know, the town says it wants to develop its property. This is the location. This is the IX zone. It's got specific provisions in there. And what we've done is take your regulations and make sure that we comply with all those requirements. In terms of hours of operation, I would guess, Mr. Cohen, that it'll be twenty-four seven. I suspect that all of those operations are twenty-four seven. I can't imagine a tenant who would do, you know, of this nature of a Class A warehouse space that would look to do anything different. So that in terms of traffic generation would be throughout different periods. I suspect that, you know, it probably would be more busy during daylight hours only because of the loading and unloading things of that sort. We'll talk about that throughout the presentation. But I just wanted to make certain that insofar as Carpenter Lane is concerned, again, you have the truck driveway that for all intents and purposes precludes a right. It'll be properly signed. It would be handled by the owner and the tenant to make sure that all vehicles exiting the site will take a left out to Research Parkway. And if, again, if this commission thought it important to make that same restriction on the automobile driveway, that's certainly not a problem. It wasn't an issue for us. It was, we had understood otherwise that this was, this was fine. But if that's a concern, it's not for us. And we're happy to comply with anything that this commission views as reasonable. So again, we've looked at the conditions of approval suggested based upon Mr. Baltromidus's review of the traffic, of the concerns that were expressed. There has been, I think, some good interaction work between your traffic reviewer, your peer reviewer and our traffic experts at BL Companies. The, the conditions of approval that have been suggested relative to traffic all relate to, as already been discussed, relate to, you know, looking at the warrant, certainly for the continued use of a signal on Research Parkway at the site driveway. You know, as a practical matter, again, from an applicant's perspective, they like having it there. I mean, I think it just, it helps. But if for some reason the town thought that getting rid of that light was a good thing and DOT agreed with it, then, you know, you live with whatever the final conclusion is. Seems to me that that would be a positive, keeping the light in place. But again, it's really an issue outside of our control and it's based upon whatever the final tenant might be in building number two and what sort of trips are generated at that location. But I didn't want this commission to think or the public to think that we're looking to do away with that light. That wasn't our suggestion. It's just to take a look at the light and see whether or not it continues to be warranted. If it's not warranted, that suggests that there's, I would think, and I'm not a traffic engineer. Fellas on the left are. It seems to me that that would suggest that the movements can work without the light. You know, so the trucks leaving from building two, taking a left to go out to Research or the trucks coming in, taking a right, don't need a light. But again, all that would be handled per that condition of approval, which would be a review after that building was occupied and analysis done. So it really is, is something that we agree with, that we think it should stay there. But if it's determined at some later point by the town and the state that that traffic light's not needed, I suspect they'll have some good basis for that conclusion. But we would just as soon see it stay there. So besides traffic, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we also talked a little bit about, or you asked questions last month about blasting. And, you know, we had said in our report that there were, there might be some areas based upon the course of construction. There might be areas that would require some minimal blasting. I think you've seen that in the responses as part of our submission. You have the hydrogeologic report. You have information. Mr. Opps is here to speak on that if need be from, if you have any questions about the blasting. I noticed that your engineer, Mr. Baltromidus, has put a condition of approval in here requiring certain pre-construction surveys of existing domestic wells within a thousand feet from the excavation limits. And expanded to fifteen hundred feet where explosives might be utilized. You know, we can make a presentation if you think that prudent at this point to just let you know, you know, the sorts of methodologies that are available in doing. And most of this is ripping, you know, the rock that might be there. But if there was the need for blasting the locations, there's a, there's a slight upon your, on your, behind you. And so you'll have an opportunity to see where the locations might be. And perhaps, Brian, why don't I have you come to the microphone and explain to the commissioners and the public what we're talking about?
Good evening. For the record again, I'm Brian Opp, registered civil engineer, geotech engineer here in Connecticut, and I work for TerraCon Consultants. So the diagram that you're looking at there are buildings one and two. And the dash line, the dash red line to the east of the buildings are the areas based on our borings where we feel that bedrock removal may likely require some blasting. Now that kind of give you kind of an overview, based on our borings, we may be able to categorize the subsurface materials into three different types. You have soil as an overburden. Basically, it's like a glacial till, so it's a mixture of sand and gravel. And then over top of that, you have two types of rock. We have a softer arcos, a reddish rock. And then beneath that, you have the harder grayish basalt rock. And the majority of our borings, and we went down eighty, eighty feet in some places to the northeast and this, or north, yeah, northwest and southwest corners. I'm sorry, northeast, southeast. We went like eighty feet down and we didn't encounter very much of the harder basalt. It was more of the weaker arcos. So based on our borings, and we've done sixty, seventy borings out there, we kind of peppered the site, both building and parking lot, retaining walls, slopes. We feel that the majority of the excavation is actually going to be by mechanical means. So, meaning that the contractor should be able to remove the rock with either the bucket of the excavator or a ram attachment that they can put, like a pneumatic hammer that they can put on the, on the, on the rig. If blasting is required, we feel that it'd be a very small percentage. And again, there's different ways you can blast. There's, there's ways of doing, without even getting into blasting, the contractor could use a chemical agent that could split the rock before they had to do blasting. And if they had to do blasting, there's techniques to make that less impactful or less adverse. So, so going back to the diagram, then we started drawing lines that are within about fifteen hundred feet. So houses or domestic wells that are within about fifteen hundred feet of these anticipated two zones of potential blasting.
Those parties would be notified as part of a pre-blast survey, is that right?
Right. So one of the recommendations that we made is to have before any blasting, if there is blasting to occur, would be have houses that are within this fifteen hundred foot radius or impact zone, you might say, to have a pre-blast survey, which is where you would have a, you know, someone who's qualified to go out and using photographs and video cameras and also taking water qualities. So you're taking structural, you're taking like a precondition structural and groundwater sampling of domestic wells and structures and structures near the wells. And then you would look at that. And then if there was a blasting event, you could go back later and then compare the data.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the proposed conditions of approval from your town engineer on page four, condition number seven, he goes even further yet, and again, it's something acceptable to the applicant. The town engineer recommends that prior to performing major site work and in addition to any pre-blast survey requirements. So whether there was blasting or not, prior to major site work, the applicant would perform pre-construction surveys of existing domestic wells, unless the access wasn't granted by an owner. So that they'd be able to have a baseline for all the people within a thousand feet from the excavation sites and fifteen hundred feet if explosives are utilized. So the suggestion isn't, it's a, it's a good one. And again, the applicant agrees with it that even doing major site work, you would do, you would do this analysis to make sure that everyone understands what, what the quality of their water is at this point. So that we would have a baseline, they would have a baseline. We'd know if there was anything that was impacted during the course of construction. So it's, again, a belt and suspender is not only the pre-blast survey that's required as a matter of law, but also an additional condition proposed by your town engineer and acceptable to the applicant. And I think, you know, one of the things, and I think you know this, we got approval from wetlands on last Wednesday, November seventh. They also looked a little bit blasting. They thought that that was really a P and Z issue. But it's a P and Z issue and rightfully in the conditions from your town engineer with regard to neighbors. But it was also an issue for the Wetlands Commission in terms of would that affect the wetlands or the watershed? And again, you know, the conclusion after reviewing Mr. Opp's report and also the hydrogeologist's report from Mr. Griswold is present. I think you saw in the proposed conditions of approval from Mr. Kruger Water and Sewer that they were comfortable that, you know, what's being done there is not going to negatively impact the quality of your watershed. And that was really one of the goals of the applicant from the beginning, was to make sure that the wetlands, the watercourses and the watershed were not impacted by this development. And that's been acknowledged and agreed by now four sets of engineers. Another issue that you raised at the last meeting, there were several of you of the commissioners who talked about noise. And I had an opportunity to speak at some length with Town Attorney Small to talk a little bit about noise. And, you know, your noise regulation, I'm sure you know well from your experience on this commission that there is a noise regulation within the town of Wallingford's code. Obviously, any tenant in these buildings would have to comply with the requirements of that noise ordinance or regulation. There are specific objective standards as to what amount of noise is acceptable. You know, there's a maximum amount of noise from an industrial district to a residential district, different levels both day and night. You're probably more familiar with that than I am. But again, that's part of your code. So at the end of the day, that whatever noise would be emanated and we'd be guessing today, or admitted, we'd be guessing today because we don't know who the tenant is. But as a practical matter, as a legal matter, it would, the tenant would have to comply with all of the requirements of your regulation. So that's the legal end of it. So there is the requirement to comply. And I think, you know, that situation, I know that you talked about, you know, Thurston and the issues in the past. And we looked at that, obviously, that was a much shorter distance between the truck loading areas and the houses on that instance than here. If we look at the overall site plan, maybe Kevin, you can pull that up. You'll see that, I mean, we're a hundred and eighty acres. And as you look at the site, the closest, let's look at the houses on High Hill Road. You know, on High Hill Road, You know, and High Hill Road sits about almost 100 feet higher than these buildings, 96 or 98 feet higher. Here's a cross section for you. And so at the end of the day, you know, we're in a bowl compared to High Hill Road, and I think that's important. There's also some retaining walls around the site, as you, I'm sure you know from looking through the, the application. So in terms, and we've got distance, so you not only do you have, you have that elevation change of almost 100 feet, you've got distances of around 900 feet or 1,000 feet or so to the nearest residence. It goes across, obviously, the EverSource property, but you also have retaining walls as part of our effort on that portion behind building two. There are also residential properties on Barnes Road that are butters, and again, they fall, I mean, they're nowhere, they're probably a couple thousand feet away from building one. I think the closest any residence is to building two is around 900 or 1,000 feet. And again, the distances between, not only the distances between the truck dock areas but, and these houses is long, but also the vast majority of the trucking loading areas, the loading docks are, are behind the buildings as you're looking at Barnes. So that unlike the Thurston situation where the trucks were actually aimed, unfortunately, towards, towards the residential subdivision, the vast majority of these parking truck loading areas are on the other side of the buildings, not facing Barnes Road. So as we've looked at it, again, recognizing that as a, as a legal matter, any tenant would have to comply with your noise regulations, I asked Attorney Small if there was anything that she could provide to the commission. She said that you all knew the regulations well. And so, I mean, that, that exists, you know, we have no interest in violating any of the regulations. I think we've shown throughout this five or six month process, as we've gone through it, we've tried to respond to every legitimate concern. So as a practical matter and an engineering perspective, again, I'm not an engineer, but as I understand it, and Michelle can get back up at some point to explain to you that, you know, given the distance from that truck area, given the fact that the building provides its own buffer to people on, homeowners on Barnes Road, given the fact that we're 100 feet lower than High Hill Road, 96 feet lower than High Hill Road, and there's those retaining walls also behind the building, that it's, it's our impression that, and talking to sound engineers, that the sound would not travel to a distance of being in violation of the regulations. There's no intent to do that. And again, if there, if there was a violation, if it turned out that a particular tenant's use was violative of that requirement, they'd have to make those, take those steps to make sure that it was compliant. It's really not that, not that complicated. It's an objective standard, either they comply or they don't. So we've, I think those were the major issues, Mr. Chairman, as I remember going through your minutes, I, I have them here again. Just give me a second, please. I think one of the comments, I was looking at your minutes, you know, Casey was here last month, and she pointed out that even if the applicant knew who the tenant was, that that can change, and I, and I think that's an important factor. I mean, at the end of the day, it may be that this commission is more accustomed to, you know, the X, Y, Z coming in, company coming in and saying, we want to build a building, and here's what we do, and so you have a, it's, it's a lot easier, no doubt about it, you know exactly what their, what their traffic is, you can figure things, you know, what their employee count is and, and all those sorts of niceties that make it a lot easier. But as a legal matter, you know, this is the IX zone. What we've done is we have not, I mean, we have less than 30% coverage in this area. I mean, we're, we haven't exceeded your coverage requirements, you know, so we comply with everything that this zone requires us to comply with. The issue of traffic, again, a legitimate one, you've had the peer reviewer tell you that, you know, this, this works, but there's always an issue with whomever the eventual tenant may be. And as a practical matter, we also have to get approval from the state. We've got to go to OSTA and get, get their approval. So there's always a mechanism really available in the event that there is, if, if traffic problems ensue. But again, we believe, our traffic engineer is here, I can have him make a presentation, but again, I think your, your reviewers already commented on, on that application and that submission rather indicates that, you know, the theories, the science, the engineering behind it is accurate, and the conditions that have been suggested by your town engineer relative to traffic are those which are acceptable to the applicant. I think they're prudent and, and wise. So we believe that we're here as a matter of right in terms of use. We've designed it in a way that, that locates the buildings in a, in a place that's nestled, if you will. You know that there, that it's, there is going to be some cut and some fills, so they have a flat plateau sort of midway up the site. It's designed to protect the watershed. It's designed to minimize any traffic on Carpenter. And again, should there be an issue about even auto, you know, vehicles, non-trucks taking a right, we have no problem with that, you know, being a condition. So you did have a lengthy list from Casey that she was kind enough to prepare, conditions of approval back on October 10th, it's one of your exhibits. I know a number of the issues there have been addressed, but again, we haven't had an opportunity to talk to her again and remove some of them, so those would certainly be acceptable, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, you have a list of conditions of approval from Mr. Kruger, from Water and Sewer, those are all acceptable. And you have a list of conditions of approval from Mr. Baltramitis, your town engineer. And again, other than on condition, and I spoke to Rob about this before tonight's meeting, on condition number eight, it indicates that prior to the issuance of a building permit for building one or building two, the applicant would perform post-construction surveys of existing, of existing domestic wells. We had asked that that be prior to the issuance of a CO. And I think, you know, Rob's here to say whether or not he, he finds that acceptable. That was the only change we thought would be prudent in condition number eight. So there have been multiple engineers looking at traffic, multiple engineers looking at stormwater management. Every member of your town staff has had its opportunity to go through this several times. I know there've been many meetings at town, at the town staff level on the application, and I know the public's here to speak, but I wanted to give this commission assurances that everything that we've done is designed to make sure that this site works and it works well. There's no desire to spend an awful lot of money building a million square feet and have it not work. It just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions? Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go back to the traffic for a second. How do you answer the concern of a tractor trailer going up Carpenter and missing that right-hand turn? And having to go, continue up Carpenter towards High Hill? I mean, that'll be a disaster. How do you handle that concern?
So how do you handle the idiot? I guess you don't necessarily design to the, you know, one of, out of a thousand, but I would suspect that, I think what your traffic reviewer said, that if they missed that driveway, they'd end up having to turn into the next driver, which is the, which is the automobile parking area, I suspect. So any, any turning movement wouldn't be on high, wouldn't be on High Hill or Carpenter, it would be within that second driveway. But they're going to be well signed. And then again, you would think that after the first time you make that mistake, you wouldn't make it again. And I really do suspect that at the end of the day, again, without knowing the tenant, but whatever trucks are going to be using that site are going to become familiar with that site pretty quickly.
No, and I appreciate that. I, I, I know you, you think that, how do you protect against an idiot? But I could, I could see that happening initially a couple times, people unfamiliar with the, with the entryway. And then the next, and that raises another question is, would a, a tractor trailer be able to make that right into that, that entrance for the cars? I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. You know, is that even a possibility if they miss that initial entry for the, that truck entry?
I'll get my engineer up here to give you an answer.
Michelle Carlson, BL Company's Licensed Professional Engineer in Connecticut. If a truck was to miss the first entrance, they could make it into the next entrance if the geometry was modified slightly to allow for them to turn right into there. And then they'd have to spin around and come out. I mean, that most certainly can be accommodated, if that's, if that's a concern.
Yeah, well, I just see it being a possibility, and if there's a chance of protecting against that, I think that, that's something that we should consider.
Yeah, I think also, if I may, we have plenty of frontage along Carpenter that we can have adequate signage alerting trucks to where the turn is and then sign right at the entrance. I mean, that's, I think we can do that. And then most of these warehouses uses are contract employees and vendors, they're not just random people on the road that are, that are coming there. They know where they're going and leaving, so they, they do have, they do have directions on what they're supposed to do. But we can make a provision, if that's a concern, that they could get in there and spin around if they missed it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And of course, I'm skipping around a little bit. So with respect to the blasting, the engineer had indicated, and I wrote this down, the majority of the site can be excavated by mechanical means. You know, the term majority is, you know, it can mean 51%, it can mean 99%. And so I'd like to kind of drill down on that a little bit and get a better sense as to what, what is meant by majority.
Yeah, I mean, we won't know exactly until you start excavating. But I would say a safe guess would be, you know, probably roughly in the area of 80% or so, could be 80, 90% is going to be soil or soft rock.
Okay. And you're focused on the northeast and southeast corners of the project. How likely is it that there may need to be blasting in other areas of the property?
Well, the way they're grading, the eastern side of the site is actually the cut and the western side is the fill. So, so we're only, I mean, we, we did borings all the way around the property, but you're not going to have to blast to fill. So it's, the eastern side is where the majority of the cutting is. And again, so what we kind of highlighted there was, we know that there's cuts in that area, but again, the majority of it is going to be either soil or very soft rock. We really did not find a whole lot of the basalt in that eastern ridge or eastern area.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. I guess my question is a little bit, a little bit different. So, you know, we know that we have residences towards the south. I mean, how likely is it that you may have to do blasting outside of those specific areas that you have listed? So is it possible that you're going to have to do blasting further south than you, than those areas that you have depicted up there?
Not based on the grading that we understand it right now, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Cowhan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a couple comments and get into a couple questions. And Attorney Sennaviva, I do agree with you. I think, you know, the applicant and the town staff has really done a pretty good job putting, you know, a lot of work and being really thorough in this, and overall, it's a pretty good plan. So I, you know, commend the applicant for that. But I do have a lot of, a lot of questions, and, you know, we did have a few other items that came up last time that I think we still need to talk about. And I'll, I'll continue on the blasting. You know, the conditions of approval were taken directly out of the hydrogeologist report, which I think if the residents have not read that, they, they should be pretty comfortable with, you know, how their, you know, well and their structure, you know, are going to be, you know, before and after any blasting. I think the conditions of approval and the recommendations in that report would make me feel very comfortable as a resident. There's a lot of, you know, pre-work that's done, checking after the blasting is complete. And I was really kind of impressed with the, you know, seismic recording that is being done. You can, you know, see how, you know, the blast, you know, pattern, you know, flows off the site, and I thought that was pretty thorough to do that. So if, if the residents haven't read that report, I, I think that, you know, would make them feel a little bit, you know, more comfortable as far as the blasting aspect. The one thing though, that came out of that report, and maybe Mr. Baltramitis can answer this, you know, there's, there's a big water tank out there, you know, a million gallon water tank on the property. And basically, that report and, you know, a couple other instances, you know, talked about, you know, doing a structural review of that tank before any of this work takes place. And based on, you know, the information I had and I read up to this point, that review was not done. And going along with that is there's supposed to be a retaining wall that is supposed to support that structure. And, you know, the hydrogeologist report, you know, based on, you know, the recommended design, you know, said that wall would support the water tank, but they said, you know, they haven't seen the actual design for that retaining wall. And I'm just wondering if, if that plan has been completed.
Good evening, commissioners. So for your record, Rob Baltramitis, town engineer. I believe it was a recommendation from the water division that that structural analysis of the tank be done, and I think it's in their letter where it would be a, a condition. So I'm going to look at you, Attorney Sennaviva, for your nod to confirm that, that is something that the applicant accepts as a condition. It's, again, something the water division required, obviously, they want to protect their tank. As far as the retaining wall, the way I read the report by TerraCon, when you're looking at a retaining wall, you're doing a global stability analysis to check for three main structural components. And I think what, what it basically says is, you know, a wall could be constructed there that will support that surcharge of that water tank. It's usually not prudent at this stage in a land use application to do a detailed design. They're, they're here, you know, seeking the land use permit. It'd kind of be like a building permit set of drawings. So, you know, it's something that will be forthcoming, but again, I, the, the analysis of the, of the tank that's built into their conditions from the water division.
Thanks, Rob. I wanted to hear you say that. So that, that part, you know, the check mark for me for that. A few other things. You know, the, the site, construction site contingency plan and, you know, it talks about having a monitor for, you know, construction and, you know, heavy rain events and an escalation process for, you know, if, if there's going to be, you know, an inch of rain during 24 hours. And I wasn't clear as to, you know, how, how that process works. I understand there's, you know, a bunch of escalation phone numbers, but, you know, the thing I was concerned about was actually having somebody there during the rain event so that, you know, nothing catastrophic happens. so that, you know, nothing catastrophic happens. So I really wasn't clear as to, you know, what that procedure was going to be. And again, I don't know if it's in place yet, whether it was, you know, a condition of, you know, condition of approval.
Okay, so the question is about the third-party inspector for the sediment erosion controls during construction. So controlling sediment from this site is paramount for the Water Division, obviously. This is the Muddy River, drains into McKenzie Reservoir. And, you know, they obviously need to protect our public water drink and supply. So the erosion control aspect of this project, in no uncertain terms, was scrutinized by staff. That's how we got to this idea of having a, kind of like we have Sherat here, working on behalf of the town, paid for by the applicant, but he's looking at our interest. So we would have that same thing during construction on the site. The agreement that I think is in your packet, it is, it's basically a summary. I think it was something that Attorney Sennaviva and Corporation Counsel, Janice Small, worked out. So it's a framework of what the agreement will be. But I agree with you, at the end of the day, we'll have a little more detail in there is how that, you know, you know, if there are certain events, how that gets ratcheted up in inspection, enforcement, in action, and that type of thing. So that's going to be, you know, something that is, you know, developed between the town and the applicant.
Thanks, Rob. Just a quick little story. When I was on Inland Wellands, we had a runoff on a construction area. And my son and I drove by it one day after a rainstorm, and it was terrible. And he said, "Dad, you're not doing your job." And I don't want to hear that again.
I think the key, you know, and you mentioned, you know, having somebody on site to do something, you know, if something's going on at the time. The key is really to make sure it never happens. It's really having the foresight. It's looking at weather patterns and it's, you know, it's somebody taking the town's interest and saying, "Hey, look contractor, I know you've got things to do here, but we're getting a storm in two days, so you got to stop this and button this up over here." Because that generally, you know, contractors may not do that in their own. But if there's somebody on site working on the town's behalf, we're hopeful that that's exactly what happens.
Thanks, Rob. Just a couple more things. You know, as far as conditions of approval, there are a lot. And, you know, when I was, and it sounds like a lot of those conditions have been satisfied. So it would be nice to see, you know, a shorter list. Because as I was going through it, I'm saying to myself, geez, there's, you know, two pages of conditions of approval. And it's really like, okay, here's your approval, but, you know, you're doing the plan as you go. So it was a little concerned, but it sounds like a lot of those have been taken care of. You know, one of the items was, you know, checking the bridge capacity for the trucks. And to me, that seems like, you know, something you got to figure out even before you get approval. Because if the trucks can't get over that bridge, you can't go anywhere anyway. And just the, you know, one other outstanding item was, and, you know, it was in the Electric Division about maintaining power to the daycare center. And, you know, there was a memo from Wallingford Electric, and it sounded like that met requirements. I was satisfied with how that was being handled. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but it seemed like that one issue was addressed. So I don't know if that's still outstanding or not. I will make just one comment on the noise. And you're right, it is a legal issue, but, you know, the experience of this commission, it's very hard to enforce and get a equitable resolution in, you know, noise cases like that. And, you know, if there's any way we could, you know, mitigate any potential problems beforehand, that's probably the better solution. And actually, one of the things I want to do is, and maybe if residents get up later and talk, if they can actually hear 91 from High Hill. So maybe, you know, there might be some noise coming from. And then just the last thing, again, going back to the traffic. And, you know, I'm still a little hung up on Carpenter Lane because, you know, traffic is going to enter Research Parkway and go to both Warehouse 1 and Warehouse 2. And, you know, you mentioned the potential for separate tenants to those two warehouses. And I'm just, you know, wondering if Carpenter Lane is actually a, you know, requirement entrance for, you know, that tenant in Warehouse 1. I still think, and, you know, Mr. Hine alluded to it as well, you know, trucks going up there and, you know, missing that entrance and, you know, would not want to, you know, add to the traffic going up there.
Just a point, if I might, let me interrupt you. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
As to the truck traffic coming from Research, there is no way to get to Building 1 from the driveway on Research. So there isn't any access where trucks could enter Research Parkway and go to Building 1. The only access there is for emergency vehicles. That was, that's the reason for Carpenter. It's a separate, you just have that access point over the Muddy River. They wanted to minimize any widening, any activity within that, within the Muddy River area. That's your primary watershed area.
I was not aware of that. Thank you. And I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions from Mr. Cohen. And I want to make sure I heard it clearly. The bridge over Muddy River, has that been verified it can support truck traffic? I didn't, I don't think I heard a clear answer.
Yes.
Certified by your folks?
Correct.
Okay. And then, is the project, since Building 1, Building 2, and it kind of came out this evening that it could be more than one applicant, more than one tenant, is the project requested to be phased, or is it, you're rolling the dice and just one whole application, right?
My understanding is, you know, they'll begin on Building 1. Ergo its number. And then I would suspect that, well, let me backtrack. Am I client suited to maybe address that a little bit more? At the end of the day, the market is such that you need your approvals, you need your plans. And you go to market and you try to find your tenants. So that the expectation is that there's such a need in the market. That's why you're seeing more and more of these industrial subdivisions, industrial warehouse developments. I mean, e-commerce has exploded, no doubt about it. And so the expectation is, is that while Building 1, again, you've got approvals for both buildings, I guess the short answer was no. But is that Building 1 would be built during the course of that construction? You find the tenant for it, and maybe a tenant is now, is found for Building 2. So you begin, the contemplation is to do it in direct order, not to phase it.
Not phasing. You noted in one of your responses to an earlier question from one of my peers that you've been working on it for five or six months. I just checked the dates of some of the stuff I have. It's dated June, and here it is November. So, but let's state for the record, this is only your second time before us for this applicant. So we're receiving a lot of information. It's been through the process. There's, you know, town departments, meetings with those gentlemen, meeting with Casey and others. But this is our, only our second chance to talk with you, to review. And we're reviewing a high volume of data. So I'm going to ask the question, and I'm looking for, you know, you can take as long as you need. But based upon what I've read, based upon what I've heard, can you explain to me why you're not using one driveway on Research Parkway? Because I've seen different comments in the material. And as recently as this evening, a comment from the town engineer indicates that he wrote, "For warehouse operations and logistics, the applicant insists that a second full access for Building 1 to Carpenter Lane is essential." Can you explain that for me?
My name's Jeff Checkaway with PMRG here with the owner of the property, for the record. Essentially, the, in the industry with this type of user, the separate entrances is ultimately required for security. You know, each warehouse would have its own truck entrance that would be gated. There's a separate guard shack shown at each location, both for Building 1 and Building 2. And from the beginning, it's always been the intent, that small connector that's shown, that's existing, which can't be widened, I believe, due to the wetlands that exist, was only ever intended for, you know, safety, fire department use, fire access.
Okay, so the short answer now is it's security.
Well, it's security, it's also the use of, again, you would have to have designed a plan where you were widening that bridge over the Muddy River.
Right.
It took us four months to get here without widening the plan over the Muddy River. And again, the whole issue was, what, how do you design this project so that you don't impact the wetlands, the watercourses, and the watershed, most importantly? And so at the end of the day, you know, there was an earlier iteration of, you know, building over the Muddy River. That didn't go well with deep, I mean, they didn't think that was a prudent plan. So that, you know, this is designed so that you have, it really is operating as two separate buildings, with separate tenants.
Yeah, I mean, just, and I know you know this, and I know, you know, most people in the room know this. The process is difficult because you're showing up to us, we are basically a third base. Everyone else is first and second. So you're rounding third when you sit before us. So all these decisions are made before us. And the water issue, huge, huge issue, the blasting, the noise, the traffic. I mean, but this is it. This is third base. And so I guess the concern I have is, I haven't seen, and again, I appreciate the gentleman's answer, to me, it's traffic. I mean, and I agree with you, it's a special permit. So we do have special rules for special permits, and you know them because that's your day, that's your day job when you appear for us. This is not my day job. It's a night job. But as I look at it, I'm looking at the appropriateness of the entrance and exit. And it concerned me last month, and it still concerns me tonight. And I think there's other issues here, but because it's a special permit, I just keep hearing different things. So the traffic seems to be my big issue. But you are correct, this is where we zoned this type of use. However, Carpenter Lane feeds a residential area and a school. So for me, that's unique. And the fact that you want to open it up to your type, your truck traffic, let's call it truck traffic, is a concern. It was a concern last month, and I know you've, we've done it, we've heard from our peer reviewer, who just only reviewed your study. But there's not, there wasn't a lot of documentation regarding site drive entrance. I mean, there was, and we kind of talked about the light, whether it should stay or go. But I guess my concern is, it's not June, it's November. But I wish we had the conversation in June about the site drive. Because I would have encouraged you to ask wetlands to cross the Muddy River, to expand it, to limit the traffic. But again, everyone has their own issues and concerns. So you're saying now there's multiple reasons why you feel you need to use Carpenter Lane.
And I'm going to go one step, the answer is yes. Let me go just one step further. I mean, we recognized, as I said at the beginning, we recognize traffic as a concern. Didn't take a genius to figure that part out. So during, you know, when we make the application, we say we want to pay, we're willing. We're happy to pay for your independent peer review. The contemplation has always been that all of the traffic from Building 1 will go from Carpenter to Research. Will there be the, you know, the occasional truck that misses a drive? I hadn't thought of that before. I suspect that's possible. Will there be people who are looking to take a right out of the parking, the automobile parking? If they live on High Hill Road, I think they'd take a right. Otherwise, it would make no sense. They'd have to wait at High Hill Road where they have a light on 68. So geometrically, 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 you can take, you can set it up so that you take only lefts out of the site, which is what our contemplation was at the beginning, which we had no problem with. We vindicated that as part of the presentation. So there has, there hasn't been any engineering information that suggests that it doesn't work. I mean, that it'll somehow negatively impact on the quality of life, you know, going up a right of a Carpenter. I mean, there's, it's a suspicion. But in terms of ITE standards, general standards, all the traffic engineering says that it will not have that impact. I don't know what else we can tell you without having a tenant and knowing where the employees live and, you know, that's not what we have.
So if I could, and I appreciate that, so the question on Carpenter, and this is actually towards the project, when I was reviewing everything all weekend. Are you giving the town any roadway improvements with this proposal? Any?
Sure. Yeah, you've got a, Carpenter Lane now is not designed with its, and Michelle should probably answer this question, but the answer is yes. I mean, we'll show you the changes that are being proposed for Carpenter Lane. It'll improve not only the site distances and access for our piece, but also you have other properties that are zoned IX on Carpenter Lane that can only have access on Carpenter Lane, which I'm sure you know. So at the end of the day, again, the IX zone is up a good portion of Carpenter. So Michelle, please.
Michelle Carlson again, and we also have Fred Greenberg, if we need him. The profile, as it sits today on Carpenter, doesn't meet the stopping distance and site distances for the design speed on the road as it stands today. So even coming out of the water tank curb cut, Eversource driveway, the driveway just downstream, down toward Research Parkway, on the same side as Eversource, the existing BMI road, those are not meeting the distances, the site distances. So as it sits today, it's not acceptable. And I'm sure you have other roads in town that have similar situations. You can't fix everything.
Sure.
So what we're proposing to do as part of this application is fix that, thus the lowering of the profile of the road. And, you know, once we get through this step, then we'll work with the town engineer and the rest of staff when we get to the construction document level to make sure, you know, the water line's exactly where the water department wants it, that the final cross-sections of profile are meeting Rob's expectations. So we're prepared to do all that. But as it sits today, it does not even meet the standards for the speed on the road.
To put you in the spot, because it's your second time before us, what's the value of the roadway improvement?
You know, I can't answer that off the top of my head. We don't have the CDs. I'd be guessing.
Okay. Is it a large section or a small section?
Well, it's about 1,000 feet of roadway improvement. And there's a section of it that, you know, the deepest lowering to meet the site distance, the stopping distance and the site distances is about five feet at the deepest part. Fortunately, there's not a lot of utilities in this road.
Right. It's all above there, right?
There's some above and some below. There's a water line going up it, but that, another water line can be, you know, put in, and then the connection's made to connect the new line with the old line. And that stuff, we have to work out the specific details with, you know, the water department and the town engineer.
If I could ask a question to the town engineer, is this something that would have been on your to-do list?
Reprofiling Carpenter Lane? No, no, it would not have been.
Are there other roads like this in town? Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
The last two items I had this evening, as I said at the beginning, this is just our second time. I remain very concerned because this use is abutting a residential zone. Those houses have been there. This is a new use next to mature houses. It's not the same as Thurston Foods, which was a mature use and new residential use. The residents are there before you. And I think it's the chicken and the egg. I know that town attorney is right. We know the rules. We know the regulations. I think it behooves the commission, as far as a condition, to address the noise because it is a special permit. It's not a by right use. It's that you're requesting a special a special permit. So I'm still struggling with how to address the noise because it gets down to two issues, the blasting potentially, and then the twenty-four-hour operation and outdoor loudspeakers and things like that. I did see the profile. I'm familiar with the site. I was there when it was Bristol Myers. I know they had issues with noise just in the helicopter. So it's not an area that's not unfamiliar with noise issues. And I know, because I heard the crowd, they hear ninety-one. So we don't need to be on top of that. So that's, and that is a challenge with noise. So I'm still struggling with that. But I think the reality is, this use is intense next to a residential use if indeed the noise is more than what they hear today. So I don't know, I didn't see on the plans or any of the documentation, there's no plans for outdoor loudspeakers on any of these terminals, is our understanding.
That's correct.
So that condition of no outdoor sound system would be an acceptable condition under a special permit?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the blasting time, I don't know if the blasting person's still here, normal hours for blasting is daytime, weekdays, weekends? Just a general question. So could we put blasting times as conditions?
Yeah, I believe there are limits. Ryan?
Come up and use the microphone, please.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Name, where you're from.
Brian Op, civil engineer in Connecticut. Yeah, blasting is usually done during normal working hours, whether that's eight to five or some defined time, you know, so.
Okay. And then I guess the question relating to the timing and the special permit, the truck. So during construction, would, is it, if approved, would the construction be a seven-day week operation, six-day week, five-day week?
I think your noise regulation, I think, might preclude Sunday. I'd have to look at that more closely.
Noise does. Let's hit the show with you.
You're asking two different questions.
Yeah.
I think he's asking two different questions. One is obviously the hours of blasting, but the other one is hours of construction.
During construction.
During construction, right.
Because if ultimate's gonna be twenty-four hours seven, twenty-four-seven, what about the construction phase?
Correct.
Jeff Checkaway with PMRG. Ultimately, the hours of operation for site construction would typically be during weekdays in the event you're making up for weather or rain events or, you know, making up time in a schedule particularly can be on a Saturday. But I don't think the intent is to have it on Sunday.
Okay. So again, as a special permit, the condition could limit the construction. And then, I'm sorry, I thought of something when we were talking about the trucks, and I promised last thing, up the hill is a school, correct? Church with a school component? Yes. In any of the traffic folks, what about the school buses? Is there school buses to that, or are those students delivered? Sorry. Okay, all right. All right, okay. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Alwerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be quick because I know the public wants to speak. But I do have a couple of concerns. And I echo the sentiments regarding Carpenter Lane. I don't, and I'm not trying to speak for the commission, is usually what somebody says when they're about to do that. And I think Building Two is a lot less of an issue for us than Building One in the grand scheme of things. Building One with the access to Carpenter with the abutting on the majority to the High Hill side is really a major issue. I have concerns on Sundays. Carpenter Lane is packed with church traffic. It's packed. I have traveled that area many, many times. I'm very familiar with the area. I can, if there was a proposal about road widening and specific turning lanes on the lower half of Carpenter for access to allow bypass traffic, maybe that would be a solution to still have access. I don't know, again, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't know how to make it work. But the way it's set up seems to me as if it's gonna cause a bottleneck. And I think we all realize it. I mean, it's been said, you know, you take a turn up Carpenter, it's probably to go home. It's probably the last time you're gonna take that trip, you know, because of the traffic here. And that's not what Carpenter Lane is designed for. It's not to be a private access for warehouse number one. And I, 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 I just, I just have major concerns about having that part of the road completely taken from the town for this, for this use without allowing the traffic to move properly. Question about that, you had mentioned with the parking lot for the cars that your client would be willing to limit the left-hand turning, the right-hand turning out of the facility, so that it would be left-hand turning only. Would it be a similar curb cut kind of piece of asphalt similar to in the pictures for the trucks, or how would you propose that?
I would defer to Michelle, but my guess is that's exactly right. It would be something geometric, so that there would be, you'd have to go over curbs and, you know, an area like that to damage your vehicle to take a right. That's why you just limit it to a left-out, geometrically.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't just thinking about signage only.
No.
Okay.
I also have some concerns about the twenty-four-seven usage of the facility. I can tell you, I've heard Bristol Myers, not their helicopter, there's some sort of machine that operates on Sundays. It sounds like a conveyor belt or a compactor of some sort. I have no idea what it is, but you can hear it all the way up to the back of Marie Drive, which is going way past, if you took the length of Carpenter and extended it going straight up, Marie Drive goes about the same length as Carpenter from Research to High Hill. So that's a significant amount of space, and you can hear this operation. The, I appreciate the idea of retaining walls potentially dampening the sound. And I appreciate the idea that it's something that your client has taken in to account. But I would like to see more. Again, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not trying to be, but just thinking about it, if you have land that comes down on a slope and you build a retaining wall of concrete, and you have sound that hits that retaining wall, because that retaining wall's on an angle, like a bowl, it's gonna come and rise up to the top of the bowl, which is going to go right at the neighborhood up there. So without some sort of vegetation or other dampening, I don't see how the sound is actually going to be prevented by the retaining wall. And I would love to see some, some information about that, whether it will, whether it won't, and what we can do on it. And I think that's really all my concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to have Fred Greenberg, who's the traffic engineer BL, the author of the report that was reviewed by your peer reviewer, just make a presentation particularly on Carpenter Lane and the access driveways.
Good evening. My name is Fred Greenberg. I'm principal traffic engineer at BL Companies in Meriden, and a professional engineer in the state. I was responsible for most of the traffic analysis that went with the project. And maybe just to talk a little bit about Carpenter. We had a earlier, earlier plan, which had a similar geometric arrangement for the car driveway, as we do for the truck driveway. In addition, we had some median islands out on Carpenter to prevent cars from making a right turn out and also making a left turn in. And we could reconstitute some of that plan. The town staff did not want to see islands in the middle of the road, and that's understandable. In addition, if you look at it just from a logical point of view, who's gonna be going that way? Who would want to go that way? People live in Durham, maybe some people live in Middletown, maybe some people live down on Longwood Seventeen. The overwhelming majority of the employees are probably gonna arrive, as they did for Bristol Myers, from I-91. I mean, it's just logical. The site is located right at the interchange. So there may be some stragglers that go that way. The other aspect is, unlike a shopping center or medical office building, everyone coming in and out of the site is either an employee, a vendor, or a contractor. And there is some control, depending, no matter who the operator of the site is, certainly over their employees and also over their contractors and vendors. I mean, our office building is up the road in Meriden on Research Parkway. If the company president came into my office and said, "I don't want you making a left turn out of the site," and I'm like, "I'm gonna keep an eye on you every night. I wouldn't make a left turn out of the site." Nothing legally required. But again, it's not, it's not, it's not the public. It's not random arrivals. It's not general people running in and out of the site. It's employees, vendors, and contractors. So there is some control, not complete control, but a reasonable amount of control over who goes out that way. And if, I don't know, Raymond Flanagan or somebody, if their employees are running to the site and they have a good understanding, good working relationship with the town and the police department, they tell their employees, "Don't make a right turn out of the site and don't come up High Hill Road." I think most of the employees would be more than happy to accommodate. In terms of trucks, again, only a truck heading to Durham or Middletown might use that way. Large trucks, and by large, I mean trucks with fifty-three-foot boxes, I believe, would be illegal to use that road to each sixty-eight. Those are regulated vehicles. They're not permitted more than a mile off the state highway system to access a site. So for them to come up, up High Hill and down Carpenter with a fifty-three-foot trailer, the police could stop and give them a ticket. I think that's a five-hundred-dollar ticket. They wouldn't be doing that every day either. So there is, there is some protection. I realize you don't want the police department. You can't have the police department out there every day. But if there is someone who's abusing it, that can be, that can also be directed by some enforcement. Any other questions on any of the other aspects?
Any other questions, Commissioner's? Amy, do you have any questions, comments?
Due to the absence of our town plan, I'm gonna defer staff to Mr. Baltramides to field any further questions or comments.
How about just our calendar?
I'm sorry?
Just a calendar on this.
Oh, the calendar on this is, we have thirty-five days from Wetlands' decision. So we should be cognizant of the calendar, but we do have, we're working on the next timeframe.
Okay. Rob, comments?
Nothing more than I think we've already covered, or that's covered in my, at least, last four-page memo of November ninth. I'll probably regret it, but I'm gonna talk about Carpenter Lane. I'm gonna talk about how the applicant got here. As Commissioner Fitzsimmons pointed out, you know, in my comments letter, I made mention that right at the onset, when the applicant came in, before they submitted land use applications, and I saw the plan, you know, albeit in detail, but essentially, conceptually, you know, the Carpenter Lane access was, you know, a sign that I asked them to reconsider. The potential of cut-through traffic and also the geometry of Carpenter Lane. So as was explained to you this evening, for their, I call it logistics, whether it's security, they have their reasons for desiring or necessitating an access onto Carpenter Lane for Building Number One. How we got to the present arrangement, or how the applicant got there, Carpenter Lane is, I believe it's posted thirty-five miles per hour, but the applicant in their traffic study had measured the eighty-fifth percentile speed. You've all heard that term before. So that's the speed at which eighty-five percent of vehicles are traveling at or below. And then that typically becomes your design speed. But that speed is some ten miles an hour higher at forty-five miles per hour. So in my unreasonableness, what I told the applicant is, if there's gonna be a driveway here, you're going to meet the intersection site distance standards for that design speed. Because in my mind, right now, the entire site, the hundred-plus acres, has sole access at Research Parkway, a signalized driveway, excellent sight lines. And again, in my unreasonableness, I wasn't gonna allow the ISDs to be diminished at this new site driveway. So that's how we got to this point where the applicant is proposing the significant off-site improvements of Carpenter Lane to reprofile the roadway to achieve those intersection site distances for the forty-five mile-per-hour speed. I agree with Ms. Carlson. I wouldn't want to venture a guess at the cost of it at this point. The plan is too preliminary. You know, we can see in profile what the shape would look like. You know, we would have to look at the total earthwork, the presence of rock, the utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So one of my conditions was that prior to, should the commission be in a position and vote favorably on this application tonight or in the future, my suggested condition would be that prior to actual issuance of the special permit, that those detailed plans be prepared and a cost estimate be prepared, approved by myself to determine that bond amount.
This being a public hearing, who would like to speak? Raise your hands first, all right. I'm gonna start on the right-hand side, right over here, yep. Name, where you're from?
Bill Petre, my address is...
Excuse me, excuse me, everyone. Can you help me out and spell your name so I don't have to spend ten years looking you up on white pages?
My name is Bill. My name is Bill Petre. The last name is P for Peter, U-T-T-R-E. I live at Four Marie Lane. It's, Marie Lane is right off of High Hill Road. I wanna make, Mr. Hein, your comments about truck traffic were very apropos, very insightful. One of the things that wasn't mentioned about truck traffic was the type of truck. Today, we have these double trailers. Companies on Research Parkway, all these companies I'm gonna mention, there are about five of them, use tractor trailers heavily. Not quite as heavily as what's being proposed here. Nobody does that. But Frontier Communications is right up the road. Amazon Fulfillment has tractor trailers coming in daily. You have the US Postal District Distribution Center with fifty-three loading docks right on, actually, it's in Wallingford. You have NEMF, New England Motor Freight, which has a transfer station. Bob's Stores is unique because it uses trucks, but it uses the double trailer trucks. These trucks, you know what I'm talking about, two trailers attached to one tractor. They cannot back up. They cannot turn around without a large amount of room. If that's the kind of trailer that's going to be involved in this situation, that presents a real serious problem for everyone. But we don't know whether that's the type of trailer. The second, that's the only comment I really had to make. There were, well, no, I do have one more. And that is, that sometime, we're in the twenty-first century. Sometime in the twenty-second century, there'll be gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen sitting where you are. And if this project gets approved, one of them is gonna say, "What were these people thinking of back in twenty-nine?"
thinking of back in 29?" Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, a lady over here.
Shirley Shaddish, S-H-A-D-I-S-H, 6 Tammy Hill Road. To follow up on Mr. Petre's, talk about the traffic and the other companies that also use the tractor trailers, I wondered if that was part of the traffic study done? Because I know when I travel 68 trying to get home, when I pass that left turn lane, it is always jammed already without these, these new warehouses coming in, and it's a concern to me to be able to navigate that, even though I'm going straight past that left turn because of the curve in the road and because of the way the traffic comes up. Even from the, the traffic that comes up off the I-91 ramp, when they make that right turn, they're not supposed to turn right on red, but they do all the time, and they cut across those both lanes of traffic. It is a nightmare for me. I am very nervous going through that as-is, and I can't imagine what it's going to be like with this additional warehouse traffic. A second concern I have is I'm asthmatic, and I'm concerned about the fumes that, I know we don't know who the tenants are, but if there's 140 trucks running constantly, idling, and along with the car traffic as well, I don't know how you can control those diesel fumes, but just like the noise rising up and above those barriers, I'm also concerned in that neighborhood that I won't enjoy my walks anymore. And that's, again, a concern for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Right over here.
Bruce Ollodhart, last name is O-L-L-O-D-A-R-T, 15 Cliffside Drive. I just want to talk about Carpenter Lane also, and just to add what the town engineer and this young lady here mentioned, you know, I've lived here almost 30 years, I've probably driven up and down that road tens of thousands of times perhaps, in all-weather conditions. It's very steep coming down from the neighborhood there. I'm not surprised by the speed that people come down or go up. There's deer and stuff that jump out. In any case, particularly in poor weather, I don't see how it would be safe to be coming down that road with trucks pulling out of that thing. There's just the one lane on one side and one lane the other way. It's not like Research Parkway where you have multiple lanes in certain parts of that. It's just very narrow in there. I don't know how you would even widen it sufficiently to make it safe if you're coming down that hill and a truck is pulling out. What are you going to do? You know, there's nowhere to turn other than into a hill or, you know, it's just not safe. So, but that's my comment.
Thank you. Over here.
I've lived up on High Hill Road, Valley View Drive for about 32 years. That's a quiet area. I sit on my porch all the time and I could tell you the traffic that I see all year long, and what you people are proposing here, I can't, I'm sitting here in disbelief that you would even propose something like this. Bristol Myers was a research facility that didn't create any problems with traffic, and to sit here tonight and listen to the thought of if a semi-tractor trailer can't turn around because of geometrics and all, it's hard to believe. If you people approve this project, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
Jen Frechet, F-R-E-C-H-E-T-T-E, 29 Valley View Drive. I am just glad that you're expressing all of our concerns. We, as you've said about the water, you know, what's the timeframe if something does happen to the water? Who's responsible? Like, do I have to put myself up in a hotel? Are they responsible? And how long would we expect it to take to be fixed? The noise, 24 hours a day, seven days a week of traffic, of tractor-trailer trucks. Those, the sound they make just when they back up, is that, am I going to be hearing that at midnight? Because our neighborhood is at a higher elevation, the sound is going to rise up. We do hear noise from the highway. This is just not a good idea. Tractor-trailer trucks are loud. There is not going to be a way to keep them quiet. You are not going to be able to build a high enough wall. Our, our neighborhood is elevated. Noise ordinances will be broken, and we already know that that's a difficult thing to fix. And then there's the traffic. Carpenter Lane should not even, that shouldn't even be a thought. It shouldn't even be touched. That's the main road into my neighborhood. I almost never go any other way into my neighborhood. And now, I would end up having to go High Hill along with, I imagine, many of my neighbors. I imagine if I was an employee in Warehouse 1, there's no way I would take a left out of there and sit behind tractor-trailer trucks when I could take a right and go around onto High Hill Road. Everybody has a Waze app or something like that that they can easily see, "Hey, look, that road kind of runs parallel," and they're going to be smart enough to figure that out. And we're going to have hundreds of cars going back and forth on High Hill every day. The intersections at Carpenter and Research and 68 and 91 are, are going to be crazy. On my way here, I, you know, I took my right onto 68, I was in line to get onto 91, I was going to take a left onto 91. There was one tractor-trailer truck and one car, and then me. So the green arrow, you know, left turn arrow, the one tractor-trailer truck and one car got through the light, and then I was at a red light. I can't even imagine what it would be like with 240-something trucks. Granted, they're not all going to be there at the same time, but it's going to be significant. And I know that everybody, like, last meeting, we're trying to get like a comfort level on voting for this, and I hope you never get to that comfort level, because I am never going to get to that comfort level to be like, to ever think that this is a good idea. I, I just think, you know, just the fact that they're proposing this is, is just, it's not a good thing for this community. Calare is an 800 mil, they made $800 million in real estate purchases or property, whatever I'm on their website. They can think of a better solution. They can find a thing that's going to be beneficial to all of us. So I hope you'll consider this when you vote. Thank you.
William Stuckey, S-T-U-C-K-E-Y, 54 High Hill Road. I'm just looking at the special requirements for the title IX.
We can't, we can't hear you.
I'm just looking at the special requirements for the title IX, and these are just two I pulled out from your planning and zoning. A description of proposed operations in sufficient detail? Have we really gotten that? And then, "Any use within the district shall be established, operated, and maintained in such a manner as to provide that each use shall be a good neighbor." I don't think a 24-hour operation that's going to produce noise can be classified as a good neighbor.
My name is Richard Chartman, and I live at 27 Cliffside Drive, S-C-H-A-R-T-M-A-N. I urge you to vote against the applicant's proposal for the following reasons. Bristol Myers site is in a zone designated IX. The zoning regulations permit warehouses in the area, but they do not permit a truck terminal in the area. The difference is a warehouse is for storage, but what the applicant proposes is a situation in which trucks can come in, exchange their goods, and leave. This is the very definition of a truck terminal, and the city has confined truck terminals to areas zoned I-20 and I-40, not IX. Item two, the IX zoning designation requires that businesses in the zone be held to a good neighbor policy standard. The applicant has not submitted any information concerning the effects of their project on our housing values. Furthermore, the applicant has not set up a fund to compensate homeowners for losses caused by their project. Item three, the applicant has not addressed the effect of the proposed truck terminal on the exit 15 interchange, which is very close to the facility. We have had accidents in the area and even, even some deaths, so this is not a minor oversight here. And four, the Bristol Myers site is a world-class research facility that is an asset to the city and the state. To tear down the site and replace it with a truck terminal is not good economic development and will permanently replace high-wage jobs with low-wage jobs. Given that the site was purchased for 10 cents on the dollar, the applicant and ultimately the city will profit if they are patient in their search for a new tenant. And then finally, I had a couple of questions to ask. Will any refueling or maintenance operations be formed at this, performed at the site? And will the trucks be washed at the site? Thanks.
Hello. I'm Dr. Angela Throm on Hemmingway Drive, last name is T-H-R-O-M. I appreciate all of the time you're spending to research this and to consider our considerations that you've done here as you go on to make this decision. I know it's a big one for the town. I have three questions, and then I do have a suggestion. So the first question is, are concerns that haven't been brought up with the, I know we've talked about the noise ordinances, and I imagine that's decibel-related. I wanted to know, is it also frequency-related? So if you have hundreds of truck terminals, they're all going to be backing up, and so the beeping, if it's continuous, it's 24 hours a day, that beeping does carry. My friend had to move, she had to relocate her home because she lived across the street from a town where they did snow removal, and they dumped all the snow from the town there, and the beeping was consistent day and night, day and night, and she had to move as a result of it because the noise carried so much. Because, well, the decibel may not be there, the frequency could be there, and it could be quite a nuisance. The second is the traffic safety. We spent so much time reviewing that, and I appreciate it. You talked about the 80 to 90% that would be turning onto 68 towards 91, but if this is hundreds of trucks a day, that's a significant number that would actually be going down 68. And so I turn off 68. I'm always nervous making a left-hand turn into my subdivision because cars go very fast, they turn on the right-hand side, the site distances are very poor there, it's poorly lit. Did you guys review any of the safety concerns of increased truck traffic on 68 as a result of all of these vehicles going on and off? So that's just something to consider there, because it is a small percentage. So like, as I'm an engineer, I would have gone and looked at the 80 to 90%, but I think you should consider this lower percentage because it is a hazardous area. The third piece is, it's a watershed area. I work in a chemical plant that's in a watershed area, and we have so many regulations to keep the environment safe. We work with a lot of dangerous chemicals. You know, this is a warehouse, you're going to have forklifts, it's going to have hydraulic fluid, you're going to have hydraulic spills. Are they prepared to clean this up? That these could be going off into your watershed. Also, what kind of materials are going to be going through these warehouses? Are you going to have ethylene glycol? It's a temporary storage area, but are you going to have chemicals going through here? And if there would be a spill, if there would be a contamination, are they prepared to deal with it that it's going right into our groundwater? The, finally, just a piece of advice. So I design products that go into people, so we have to take a lot of consideration when we do this. And one things that we do is we do a complaint analysis, and we look at our products that are on the market, and we look at what complaints that have been filed with, with users, with those, and we review them as we're designing a new device. We make sure that we've looked at those complaints. So as e-commerce is on the rise, there's many of these warehouses going in, and I was looking at an article of warehouses going near residential areas. Have we looked at any other ways, areas in Connecticut or even out of state that's a similar situation and look at the complaints that have come out of this or the impact to the community? That's one thing that I would recommend doing before making your decision.
Anybody on this side?
Keith Larson, I live at 3 Tammy Hill Road, so L-A-U-R-S-E-N. Someone raised the concern about what if a truck misses that turn on Carpenter Lane? And in fact, I think two of the, the reasons that were given that there would be an alternative to that was, one, that there would be a second entrance, and the other thing, I believe the attorney mentioned, that over time, the truck drivers would become familiar and we wouldn't miss the entrance. So a couple of things on that. I believe the independent traffic evaluator suggested that they did not want to have two independent driveways, and that recommendation was to go to a single driveway. So if we were to go to that, I think that takes away, it, it does increase the possibility that a truck could miss that turn. I think the comment about the truckers getting to know the, the actual turn and entrance, it's interesting, if we don't know who the tenant's going to be, for anybody that knows anything about warehousing, if you are an e-commerce center, if you're a center that's dealing with truck traffic from all over the United States, you're going to have independent truckers that come once and only once, and they get one chance at making that turn. They're not going to know it. If it's not a, if it's not a, a company that's actually has its employees doing it, like Thurston Foods, it's going to be a whole series of truckers from all over the United States that come in. So that clearly won't be the case. If they do miss the turn, there's going to be no place for them to turn around, and the only way they're going to be able to do is to go up Carpenter Lane, come down High Hill Road. And I think we have to look at that as a realistic opportunity that that could happen. A question was asked about noise. So at Tammy Hill, we live really parallel to High Hill, and in the winter months, we actually can kind of see a little bit of Bristol Myers. Ever since Eversource went in and took down a whole bunch of the vegetation as part of the power line project most recently, we've had more access to noise. I can tell you that during the season when it snows, we can hear the snowplows plowing, we can hear the backing signal of those snowplows very clearly, and that's one or two trucks. So if we're talking about something where there's 240 truck bays, we're obviously talking about a whole lot of noise that's going to come up our way. Last comment I have is, there were a number of comments made about the traffic that would potentially go through High Hill Road, and I think statements were made both by, both by the attorney and by the head of the traffic study for BL Companies about the fact that they said people wouldn't want to go through those neighborhoods and they wouldn't want to take that route because the difficulty of turning onto 68. I find it interesting, we spent so much money on studying the traffic, what would happen on Research Parkway, but comments are being made without a study of what happens on High Hill Road and Tammy Hill Road with people taking shortcuts. I can tell you that when there was work that was being done on Research Parkway a little while back, the amount of traffic that cut through to, to avoid that was extremely significant to us. People cut through every day, and it's the entire shoreline. It's not people that just live in Durham, it's not people that just might live in North Haven, it's people that live all throughout the shoreline that commute up there that would take that, that cut. So I think, I think making a comment that, an assumption that people just wouldn't want to make that right-hand turn, I don't think that's a correct assumption. So thank you for my comments.
Rachel DiPietro, D-I-P-I-E-T-R-O, and I live at 2 Tammy Hill, and I just wanted to second what Mr. Larson was saying with the concern about someone taking a right onto Carpenter and a right onto High Hill. If you went down, obviously, to the bottom of High Hill where it meets 68, it's a nightmare. Yes, people probably wouldn't do that again. However, if you are on High Hill and you take a left onto Marie Lane and a right onto Tammy Hill, there is an exit right out to 68 off Quarry Run that a lot of cars do take, especially when there's construction or delays. We have a lot of heavy construction equipment vehicles going down our street, taking that to a cut-through. I know because my sons like construction equipment, so they were pointed out every time, big machines, you know, cement trucks, you name it, things I don't even know the term for. So that will happen. And then also, the traffic time on 68 for the entire town and not just our neighborhood is very painful. Our neighborhood, actually, the elementary, high, middle schools that we're zoned for are all the way on the other side of town. So we're zoned for Sheehan. My son right now goes to Highland. It takes 25 minutes in the afternoon to get home. You add these tractor-trailers, it's going to make it longer if we do end up consolidating school. schools. We have to think about that for the bus times, for how early the kids have to get up. I think it's just adding this traffic to 68 is going to really impact everyone in town and not just even our neighborhood.
Anybody else on this side? All right, over here on this side.
Hi, I'm Chris Gaffney. I live at 182 High Hill Road. That's G A F F N E Y. I'd like to thank you all for the seriousness with which you're giving this issue. I know one of you mentioned earlier today that the applicants are treating this as though they're rounding third base, that they've kind of forced their way through and giving you an avalanche of documents and that you're their third base. Well, you're our first base. So I want to thank you for all the seriousness with which you're taking these concerns. As I'm sitting here, I keep thinking about earlier this spring, when we may or may not have had a tornado, nobody really knows. That evening, when I was coming home from work, there was a tree down that went completely across High Hill Road. So I had to turn around, come back and go down Research Road. And then I turned to go up Carpenter Road and there was a tree down covering that road as well. And I realized there are only two ways in or out of my house. And that's true for an awful lot of the people here. And what happens when a truck perhaps jackknives or some sort of event occurs that blocks one of those ways? Now you're looking at hundreds of people, school buses, churchgoers that are going to be impacted by that. And that's something we really ought to consider. And I did like one term that the advocate for the applicant used, although I would use it in a different way. He used it to try and talk about the mitigating impact of the noise. And the term he used was that the location is nestled. And it really is nestled and what it's nestled in is a neighborhood. And the impact of what happens at that location will radiate throughout that neighborhood, whether it's with lights, whether it's with noise. Are there going to be refrigeration units idling at all hours of the night? Are there going to be people sleeping in their trucks, which truck drivers often do when they find a place? That's really going to impact the whole community. So I'd like that to be considered as well. Thank you.
My name is Dilip Patel, 14 Whiskevin Road.
Patel, be a little closer to the microphone.
D I L I P, just like filling with the D. I would like to see the profile of the Carpenter Lane. What's the 85th percentile speed?
You have to ask the questions through the chairman.
What was the 85th percentile speed?
It was about 44 miles an hour.
What's the posted speed limit? So we are improving the road, which is designed for 35 mile per hour speed to 45 mile hour speed. Is it correct? Side line will be, stopping side distances would be improved from 35 mile per hour speed to 45 mile hour speed. Is that correct?
Partially. We propose a design for 45 miles an hour. What the current design speed is, I'm not sure. The speed limit is 35.
Okay. So, so once you, once you improve this road from 35 mile per hour speed to 45 mile hour speed, what that will do to the motorist? People has a tendency, when they see the improvement in the road, they will drive fast, which will make this road very unsafe, considering the residential neighborhood. Another thing, we are, we are cutting the road on the top of the slope, as I can see in the profile. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what that will do to the slopes on the side?
We'll have to re, we'll have to regrade these side slopes.
Correct. Do we have a water tank there? How that will impact, how that will impact to the integrity of the water tank?
Could you repeat that? I didn't.
My concern is if that cut is nearby water tank, will it impact the integrity of the water tank?
No, it doesn't impact the water tank.
One more thing I have to say, there are ways and means in construction industries that you can combine those driveways. Internally, you can, you can redesign the site and with the, with the means of construction, you can minimize or probably I would say no impact to the wetland so that you may not require two separate entrances, one on, on the Research Parkway and another one on the Carpenter Lane. So, so if someone can implement means and method in a construction, there is a small road that connects to building. I think that was the concern why they had, they end up with the two separate driveways. If someone looks into the means and methods of construction so that there is no impact to the wetland in that area, I'm talking about the muddy river, and they revise the, the site plan internally so that they may not require the truck entrance from the Carpenter I don't know. Has anybody looked into that or no? That's all.
Robert Demayo, 14 Marie Lane, D E M A I O. I just have a few comments I'd like to make this evening. Let me first by saying certainly as residents, I think we all want a very financially viable town. I think balancing at what expense and what cost that comes at is critical and I think the safety and well-being of our, of our community cannot be compromised when we think about financial viability. Nobody wants empty parcels of land. Nobody wants empty buildings. But again, it has to be balanced with the health, safety and welfare of our, our community. In my view, legalities aside, and I think we've heard a lot of legalities tonight, this proposal shares size and scale in this location, in my view, shows complete disregard for this community. And I get it, the applicant is a real estate investment firm. Their goal is to make as much money as they can, flip the properties, lease them out, make more than they paid for them. It's fine. That's great. That's their job. Their website talks all about it. They've, they're obviously very, very good at it. That's their job. It's fine. The job I think of this commission, and I know it is, is to ensure the health, safety and welfare of this community. And I believe you're going to do that in the end. Further, just a few other points I'd like to make and candidly, there's still many. My fellow residents here have pretty much hit on all of them. When you think about tractor trailer noise, lights, I think diesel, air pollution, blasting, water contamination, light port pollution, quality of life, and then most importantly, safety of travel, that's the one I think, we really didn't hear any good answers to that tonight. With all due respect to the experts that were here tonight, we got very soft answers, very soft. What I heard tonight were words as follows. It should, it may, the intent is, random, hard to predict, and there's unknowns. Specifically, as we talk about Route 68 and Research Parkway, that area is already not, not in my view viable. I think it's very poorly designed at this point, given we've got a new hotel, Hilton Garden Inn, we've got the Connecticut Food Bank, we've got existing commerce on Research Parkway, Amazon and the like. We've got another hotel that is soon, I believe to come in. We've got existing traffic, Tilcon, we've got regular residents that are here tonight, school buses and Durham Wallingford traffic. Adding a hundred or more tractor trailers, 24 hours a day, seven days a week to that area, it's just, it's unconscionable to me. I don't know who said it earlier, but it's just simply unconscionable. And I don't know where all these studies were done. They seem to be have done, were done on Research Parkway. I didn't hear a lot about 68 and that area. I mean, so I think that's a huge miss. Further, as it relates to Carpenter Lane, I mean, what, what more can you say? Again, there were no good answers tonight as to why there couldn't be an exit on Research Parkway. It sounds like it might have cost too much, frankly. That's what I heard from the applicant. In my judgment, this proposal resembles something you'd see off of a major thoroughfare, a service road where there's no residential area nearby, never mind a budding it, maybe something you'd see on the Jersey Turnpike off an exit. That's where these things belong. They don't belong near residential communities. I get there's not a lot of space, but they just don't belong next to a residential community, period. Again, legal, again, I'll just say legalities aside because that's to me was what, all we heard tonight was legalities. Why it takes five months to get to this point is probably a whole nother story about the management of municipalities. I don't believe anyone here who's honest, candidly honest with themselves could look at this application and say that this facility belongs anywhere near this area. There's no way that this property, that this was the use it was intended, intended for. It just, there's no way it was conceived. I don't know who said it before about somebody's going to look back 50, 100 years from now and say, what were people thinking? I don't believe you guys are going to do that. But so a couple of other things, in my view, I would just say that this, this application is outrageous. I think it's dangerous. I think it's going to have a negative impact, potentially tragic sadly. I don't think any of us want Avon Road. I know this isn't a hill, but to have a lot of tractor trailers to be pumping through Route 68, right? And we're, and we want Wallingford to become the Avon where there's accidents constantly. God forbid that. 245 loading docks, 143 trailer stalls. Why don't we call this proposal what it is? It's a tractor trailer terminal, massive. That's what it is. Very simply just doesn't fit or belong in that area or this town. And in closing, I hope this commission sees through all the legalities and does the right thing and denies this application.
Chiak Aragoni, 18 Martin Trail. It's my second time in front of this commission. I've been following this of the inland wetland for four other meetings I attended too. It took them four meetings to decide what to do. You're only on your second, so take your time. Last week or last month, I think I was the only one that spoke against this. Don't blame me, not all my friends, but I appreciate your help. I did send you that letter. I touched on the noise. I put in there about the traffic. There were some electrical things, issues last meeting, now a gas line. The thing I want to really zero on is the muddy river and the Wallingford watershed. Everything seems to be focusing on the building of this and you're worried about some mud and blasting. And then that is how I start off, the blasting issue. But the reality is this is smack dab on the Wallingford watershed. And I had a lot of concern about the trucks. If the other slide could be shown again, you see you have a double turn back going up the building too. It's the building on the right, trucks have to go up and that is a hill. They have to climb 50 to 70 feet from Research, make that sharp right turn, drive to the right, make a hard left turn, 180 degree turn. They're going to have to do that in the winter. What that means is they're going to be putting a lot of salt on that road. The trucks, trucks require a lot of salt and especially on a hill. In the letter, I also mentioned I witnessed a truck flipping over on 91, getting, going from 68 onto 91 as he was making the left turn. I also mentioned I helped the guy and the first thing that I noticed was diesel fuel all over the place. I bring this up again tonight because even when tractor trailers are driving straight, right out on 91, happened again this week, we've had three accidents on 91, couple of them rolled over, another accident. And then I believe it was Monday morning, it was one down in Groton. Because of the weather and the diesel fuel, they had an awful tough time containing it. I'm very worried what's going to happen when a truck tips on that first turn back. Not to mention what they're carrying. We know we're producing paint in town. We have chemicals. God knows what's going to be on the truck when it does flip, let alone what they're storing. Someone else had mentioned, you know, it is a warehouse. Last thing I'd like to mention is this commission changed zoning about a year ago due to economic. I'm just wondering why it can't be changed again to protect the watershed. That's all. Thank you.
Major Dale Horrigan, H O U R I G A N, nine Marie Lane, Wallingford. Thirty-seven years in law enforcement, five with the Wallingford Police Department, 32 years with the Connecticut State Police. I can tell you, I've probably met a lot of these neighbors here at High Hill and Carpenter Lane at the intersection. I hope I was nice to you. But I have taken a lot of enforcement action over the years. Twenty years driving a state police cruiser on and off duty in that area, in particular Carpenter Lane and Research Parkway. The four-way stop sign, nobody stops there. I see Amazon trucks, trucks from a post office, people going to work. Very seldom do you get people that oblige and do the right thing. You talked about trucks taking wrong turns. I saw an Amazon truck the other day trying to make its way up by High Hill Orchard. High Hill Quarry is a cut through. I could tell you from my personal experience from stopping cars, pulling motorists over and looking at their identification, asking them where they're coming from and where they're going, it's a cut through. The previous speaker talked about the warehouse and the unknown contents of those tractor trailers. I would ask, sorry about that. I would ask the board to consider storage of hazardous materials. You know, what type of freight are they going to be bringing in? Are there any potential risks, explosives or hazardous vapors from spills or other toxic conditions that could arise as a result of cargo that's mishandled? Street lighting, Carpenter Lane doesn't have a lot of street lighting. Are they going to make improvements to the street lighting? There's no sidewalks on that street. I could tell you that pedestrian traffic is, is pretty intense, especially around the noon time. You have a lot of businesses on Research Parkway and people from those businesses like to walk. They come up Carpenter to High Hill. And if you've got tractor trailers and pedestrians without sidewalks and motor vehicle traffic increasing, that's certainly going to be a hazard in the area. Are they going to address that?
Are they gonna address that? The other question I have is, how much frontage is on Research Parkway that belongs to this parcel? And I find it hard to believe, with all that frontage that does exist, that they can't somehow engineer and design egress to and from their facility on Research Parkway. There has to be some way of engineering and conducting improvements where they could utilize Research Parkway instead of impacting our quality of life up in a high hill area. Tonight, they did a great presentation, but one thing is known, there are more unknowns than there are knowns. We haven't been provided with a lot of facts here tonight, and I think it's very difficult to make a good decision to support both entities, the company that wants to build here and protecting the quality of life of the neighbors that have been in this area and inhabiting this area for a long time. In closing, I would just ask that you consider the public safety aspect. I wish I had a nickel for every accident that I investigated where an engineer has approved a plan. And I don't mean to slight the engineer, but you're sitting at a desk in a sterile environment, this is real life. These are real people, these are real vehicles, and real concerns.
I'm Bruce Anesi, 91 High Hill Road. Last name is spelled A-N-E-S-I. I've lived on High Hill Road for 17 years. It's the longest I've lived anywhere in my life. It is my home. We knew it was the proper home for my wife and my stepson when he saw the big backyard, and we knew there would never be anything built back there, and that would be some property that he could play on and grow up on. It's now 17 years later, and we have this proposal that jeopardizes the character and the environment that we live in. And I would urge you, as the commission members, that you should be advocating for the residents who already live on these properties in favor of someone who wants to come here new and bring us unwanted noise pollution, air pollution, increased truck traffic to our residential neighborhood. Bristol Myers was a good corporate neighbor, producing no adverse impact to our neighborhood, and I would encourage you to improve only those projects that carry on that standard. Thank you very much.
Joe Heeran, H-E-E-H-E-R-A-N, 206 High Hill Road. I've been a resident of Wallingford for 47 years. I've been on High Hill Road for 40 years. I've seen the whole development of the Apple Orchard, all the development in our area. I've seen before there was Bristol Myers, before there was any industrial on Research I would just first like to give you my experience. I work in Monroe, Connecticut, so we take the merit. This stuff about whether or not a truck is gonna end up High Hill Road, I guarantee you they're gonna... On the Merritt Parkway, it's posted, no trailer trucks, no commercial vehicles. Inevitably, it's not uncommon that state police have to back off a tractor-trailer on the Merritt Parkway. Tonight, I'm very disappointed because I have many, many concerns that were voiced so eloquently by the residents in this area, but none of my fears have been laid at all. When I take the merit and I get off at Exit 15 northbound, inevitably, there is traffic backed up to the highway. That's not uncommon. And I do make the right-hand turn onto, and turn left onto Research Parkway. It's an ordeal, as it is now. There was a young lady that told that she was three vehicles at that light. Inevitably, you have to wait. You could change the speed of the light, but still, it's gonna have an impact on 68 in that case. Carpenter Lane is the main access for me and probably most residents in the High Hill area. To distort that and destroy that and take away a lot of the freedoms that we have by taking that road, it would restrict our access to our own homes. Now, I tried to get my mind wrapped around the size of this facility, which is 1.1 million square feet. And I'm not an expert on the computer, but I did a search, and with that kind of footprint, that would be the 10th largest building in the world, 1.1 million square feet. Of course, that does assume the footprint of both of these terminals combined. That's huge. That's the biggest buildings in Wallingford by far. This is not the capital of Connecticut, this is Wallingford, Connecticut, which I dearly love. I've raised seven children in this, and now I'm seeing it turned into Potter'sville in this area. I don't mean to be dramatic, but I feel very strongly about Wallingford, Connecticut. And this would really destroy this neighborhood. And I do appreciate the public hearing, but I was only aware of it with the latest notice going through. Could I ask, when is demolition planned for Bristol Myers building? When does that start? No, but when is it planned? We're on third base, they're on third base, I'm not even halfway to first. This seems to be rushed through, and there's so many unanswered questions. We don't know what's gonna be stored at this facility. Because we don't know, we can't control its development. You don't know what it is.
Richard Gordon, 93 High Hill Road. I've been a resident up in High Hill for 32 years, and we moved in right after, or just before Bristol Myers had opened up. One of the issues that I'm concerned about, and there's been so many valid concerns voiced today by the residents of the High Hill neighborhood, but there's only been a few slight comments alluding to lighting. And I will tell you that when Bristol Myers first opened up, there were some spotlights, some very bright spotlights on the back of the building that were creating an issue for us at our house and also our neighbor to the right of us, to the left of us, I mean. And we took it to Bristol Myers, they were very open to hearing what our issue was, and they addressed it. Now we're talking about a footprint of 1.1 million square feet of warehouse space. My question is, have there, are there studies that have been done related to what the potential lighting pollution might be from these two warehouses? And second question, are there local standards that must be met related to the amount of lighting that can be emitted from two structures of this type? Those are questions that I'm asking. If nobody knows the answer to that, I would suggest that...
Well, the answers are yes and yes. I didn't know you wanted an answer, Mr. Sherman. I didn't...
I'm just gonna have you respond to those after.
At the end, yeah.
He'll respond to them after.
Okay, thank you. I'd appreciate it if you would take a look at that, because in my mind, just as important as this potential noise pollution issue is, is the lighting.
John Livingstone, L-I-V-I-N-G-S-T-O-N-E, 42 Valley View Drive. Lived on Valley View for 34 years, and I've seen a lot of traffic coming up and down Carpenter Lane. And about 15 years ago, we had a snowstorm, like what's supposed to happen tomorrow, and somebody sent an 18-wheeler up Carpenter Lane. And you know what happened? The guy jackknifed, because he realized he was in the wrong spot. The problem is, he was fully loaded, the truck couldn't make it up the road, he just was spinning his wheels. Now, how many of these tractor-trailers that are coming in are gonna have nice, deep cleats? Because we get a lot of snow up in that neighborhood. And what happened? He jackknifed. We sat on Carpenter Lane for three and a half hours, waiting for a tow truck to come up and pull him out, straighten him out, so that he could back down so we could get home. In the meantime, I talked to another neighbor who said that on the other side, on High Hill Road, the snowplow was having problems, and he slid backwards. So, you know, piggybacking on Mr. Gaffney and the lieutenant, there's a lot of traffic up there, and it's not always done properly. The biggest thing is snow plowing. If we get any snow at all, and these guys come up and they're gonna use Carpenter Lane, they're gonna be packing that stuff down. What do you do? You got ice. Now they're gonna change the grade, so now you're gonna have more cars sliding downhill, right? And we're gonna have more accidents there.
Hi, I'm Beverly Morse. I live at 174 High Hill Road. If you come down Carpenter Lane to High Hill Road, my house is the fifth one down on the left. Since we've had some issues with Eversource, we have no noise barrier, and I have some good views of the power plant that I was never supposed to have, and I have some views of Bristol Myers. I believe also there's a residence, a private residence, on Carpenter Lane. Now, tractor-trailer trucks aren't the quietest vehicles that I've ever heard, so I can only imagine what those people will feel like when the tractor-trailer trucks are coming down Carpenter Lane at 2:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, and that noise is going to travel. I can hear 91, and I've heard the power plant from Bristol Myers. Plus, my bedroom is upstairs, as many of the houses are colonials and the bedrooms are upstairs, you open your windows, and that's what you hear. I've lived in that house for 40 years, and I've seen a lot of changes, and they haven't been good changes for the neighborhood. And I really hope that you don't vote this change in. I agree with a lot of what people have said. My other question is, if they demolish the Bristol Myers building, where do all the remains from the building go? Where are they taking them? How are they getting them off the property? Or are they leaving them there? What are they doing? And what will that do to traffic?
Hello. My name is Christine Livingstone. I'm married to the man that spoke earlier. My name is spelled the same, L-I-V-I-N-G-S-T-O-N-E, and he's my husband. I've lived for 44 years, 44 years, in Wallingford. And we presently live at 42 Valley View Drive, the street right parallel to High Hill Road. I first want to commend the representatives of the applicant for being very thorough in endeavoring to comply with all of the town ordinances and regulations concerning our environment, specifically the impact on the land, on the water, and on the air, which many of my fellow neighbors here have so eloquently elaborated on, and I agree with all of them. The ordinances that I talk about, like ordinances and regulations in any community, in any city, in any country, in this world, are based on one factor, and that is the human factor. We are all humans, and those ordinances were developed by us and for us to protect our welfare in all of these areas. And I think that this proposed facility to be coming into where Bristol Myers was is not welcome in our community for many of those reasons, okay? It will not protect our welfare, it will in fact ruin it. We've seen some examples of destruction in Wallingford with cyanide and with, in part, Eversource. We've seen some environmental impact in what it can do, and we're scared out of our minds. We don't want that to happen to us because of what possibly can happen with this endeavor. There are too many unanswered questions, and they have tried to comply with, you know, to answer the compliances, but just the compliances, and go that far, only that far. But they have ignored the human factor. So, I really hope that this board will consider that and consider all of the concerns of my fellow residents, and use your consciences when you vote. Thank you.
Is there anybody else over here?
Ed Bradley, 2 Hampton, 2 Hampton Trail, B-R-A-D-L-E-Y. My home is located just south of that site. We've lived there for 44 years. Prior to the early 80s, we never had a problem, never had a problem with the ecosystem, with the aquifer, with the muddy river, with Spring Lake. The backside of my property is at the north edge of the wetland to Spring Lake. Let me give you a little background for some that don't know me. I spent eight years on the Wallingford Conservation Commission. I spent four years on the Town Council, two of those years as vice chairman. I was instrumental working with DEP, getting the Inland Wetlands Commission established in town here. Like I said, we never had a problem with that area till Research Parkway was starting to go in. That was the start of sediment, red water, coming on down the muddy river into Spring Lake. That only got compounded with the construction of the Bristol Myers site. I and the other residents, 100-plus, led the charge against the development of that site because of the impact on the ecosystem. You heard a gentleman talk here about soft words. Why are they familiar? That's all we heard from Bristol Myers, were soft words. Because we had nothing but problem after problem after problem with runoff, with red water, with sediment filling in. water, with sediment filling in Spring Lake. There used to be a pond right at the corner of Williams Road and Route sixty-eight. Some people have a different name for it, but I believe it was called Miller's Pond. That area of there in the heavy rain, Route sixty-eight used to flood. And DOT would come in and break off the top of the spillway. I've seen them do it, we have pictures of them doing it. That eventually caused the failure of Miller's Pond. With that washing out, and all that sludge and bottom sediment washing downstream through the muddy river, I had three to four inches on my lawn. But again, that was the start, Research Parkway compounded it. When Bristol Myers, when it first started our issues, we formed as a group, and every permit, every permit that DEP had to apply for, for that site, we forced a public hearing. I don't know the permits that they have outstanding, but upon our review, we stand ready to force public hearings on those permits. Talking about permits, one thing that I missed was, I got involved real late in this, and I was at the last inland wetlands meeting, and they approved their plan based on a final revision, a final revision to the erosion and sediment control plan. I don't know why your people are taking this up now. I just have a short file. I have boxes of files, every building on there, the two main buildings, the helipad, the trash, their trash burning plant. Again, we went through all the permits for that. We raised public hearings on it. Jim Heilman, who some of you may know that served on the inland wetland commission, he and I worked very close on air emissions because they were burning, they were going to burn pathological waste up there. But again, that's neither here nor there. This is from nineteen eighty-four, April fourth, nineteen eighty-four, facts of findings from DEP at that time. And they state, "The proposed project is located near the headwaters of the muddy river, a Class A," again, "a Class A stream, which flows into Mackenzie Reservoir and provides portable water to the residents of Wallingford. The muddy river has been historically stocked by trout. The on-site wetland watercourses are part of a large, highly diversified wetlands, stream corridor system of regional importance. The subject wetlands' watercourses serve the following functions: Provide the highly diversified and high-quality wildlife habitat that is due to its large size, diverse vegetation, surrounding agricultural uses, and its association with the other wetlands' watercourses complex to the south. The wetlands' watercourses serve to maintain the quality of ground and surface waters, facilitate drainage, control sediment, and migrate flood flows. The muddy river serves as a tributary to the public water supply. The wetlands' course enhance the overall environmental quality of the area." I have the history of Spring Lake that goes back to the early nineteen thirties. And I just wanted to read one letter dated September twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-one. It was from William Mackenzie, Mackenzie Reservoir. Gentlemen, this was to the Spring Lake Association at that time. Extremely dry weather and serious level of all reservoirs in New England and other states is approaching a serious stage of conditions. The lane's best three-quarter square mile watershed and reservoir of about fifty million gallons capacity has been practically dry for five months. The request is therefore made that the Wallingford Water Department be permitted to draw water from Spring Lake. My point here is, Spring Lake is a critical component of the watershed. Because of the seriousness that we had with the Bristol Myers development, I got the Army Corps of Engineers involved. They were very interested in it, along naturally with DEP. They flew aerial photos of the area, but they did not require a nationwide permit because they were grandfathered in from a prior regulation that predated their current regulation. But it was good for eighteen months. My question to the commission or to the applicant, does this site require a nationwide permit? And again, the nationwide permit can be done on an individual, specific basis. Again, I'm referencing regulations from nineteen eighty-four. I'm sure they've changed, so I don't know what that is. One of the concerns, big concerns that I have, is the pond that's going in on the east side, and any bleed out from that pond. There's supposed to be a gate on that pond. And like I mentioned to Aaron, who's going to monitor this site? Who, when, where, what, what time? And who do we contact? A twenty-four-hour contact. Now, I think they're hiring a town consultant overseer to, but I haven't seen that plan. When we get into protection, there really is no protection for the homeowner. We hired an attorney, but how do you fight a multi-billion dollar industry? I have videotapes of the site. I showed it to my commission at the time. I showed it to the Town Council. When they came up for some of their major permits, the hearing officer up in Hartford rejected the video. He would not allow me to show it. Why? Because it's a multi-billion dollar industry that's coming to Connecticut. I look at this, it's almost the same. I don't know if there's any showstoppers in this, but the more I looked at that Carpenter Lane exit, I don't know if that's your route. Is that your showstopper? Does it go back to inland wetlands from there to be able to cross that bridge? I don't know, I can't answer that question. But again, the homeowner is not protected. Bonding does not protect us. It protects the site and the town from making corrective measure. The area is also sensitive to migratory wildlife from your regular mallard duck, Canadian geese, blue heron, green heron, hawks, and then your regular strain of, string of large wildlife from deer, all the way down to bobcat and whatever. So again, it's a very sensitive area. I could probably go on for eight hours, but I think you, I think you-
Thank you.
You get my point.
Anyone else on this side? All right. Like to call it back? Where? Oh, sorry.
I just want to wrap things up by saying, I moved to Wallingford-
Who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori Mendigrell-
An address.
N D Y G R A L, it's a long one, gotta wait. Sixteen Martin Trail, I live on Spring Lake. I moved here because of the lake. I grew up in New Haven, and I wanted to raise my kids in the suburbs. Wallingford was a gorgeous suburb when I moved here twenty-two years ago. I raised two beautiful kids in Wallingford's very good school system, one of the other reasons I moved here. I've watched Wallingford grow out of the suburbs and more into the cities with Route Five becoming a massive nightmare. We don't want that to happen to Route sixty-eight. It's hard enough getting through one end of town to the other end of town, especially by Main Street. We all know that, that situation around five-thirty. I'd like Wallingford to stay, the suburb I moved here for. I want to have my lake, and I'm only a mile down the road from Bristol Myers. You're going to affect my lake, you're going to affect my well. Where do I go from here? I just want you to think about the little people that you have here in town and why we all live here. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to bring it back to-
Jane Ronka, W R O N K A, fifty-four High Hill Road. I just want to point out one thing, since we have that picture up. When we talk about twenty-four-seven and the noises of the trucks, I didn't hear anything pointed out about shifting up, shifting down, that hairpin turn in front of Building One. If I'm going to hear that twenty-four-seven, trucks going up, hairpin turn, they got a downshift, upshift, that's a whole level of noise different that we can hear ninety-one, we can hear them shifting there. It's going to be worse. Thanks.
So we're going to bring it back. Applicant have any comments?
I do. Everyone's told you about their history in the site, and it is interesting to note, and this is their neighborhood. I can tell you that I've been doing this for forty years, and what I listen to is, because oftentimes on projects of any significant change, there is a large group in opposition, and I get it. One of the things that I was listening for was anything empirical, anything quantitative. And I understand the visceral reaction to a project, but again, you know, one of the things that you are is that this is a commission of- I could go on for eight hours, but this is a commission, you know, that's bound by its regulations, you know, this is a special permit, has been pointed out. In bringing the application forward, you know, this was done with an awful lot of forethought. I know that Commissioner Fitzsimmons indicates, you know, that this is unfortunately not, you know, your first look at it, and we're already past a certain lengthy process. But there is a history to this too, and that is, again, Bristol Myers squib is gone, you know, they're vacating the building at the end of December. Before they sold it, they tried to find somebody else to take that building. I'm told by local commercial brokers that Wallingford has its highest level of vacant office space in its history. So the likelihood of, the ability to find someone, and I can well imagine that Bristol Myers squib probably wanted to find someone to take over this building, pay them a substantial sum of money and use, it is, it's a nice-looking building. There was no one, and their efforts were great to try to find someone to take over that building. There was some, there were interested parties, as this commission knows better than I do, but the uses that were being looked at, or the users, there was a concern about whether they'd be not-for-profits or not taxable and all the other concerns, and so for a number of good reasons that were upheld by a court, there was a change to the regulations, the I X zone, so certain uses were taken out that would have had, again, a low truck traffic volume, but would have also provided, you know, very little in terms of revenue to a town. And this is, it is, it's a big site, it's an important component of your grand list. After December thirty-first, you know, the building will be raised. As a practical matter, that's not something the owner wants, wanted to do. They were out looking, beating bushes everywhere throughout the country to find a potential office user for this site. There were none. It doesn't make sense to simply raise the building because they wanted to. They're only raising the building because there is a glut of vacant office space, there is no one interested in this site. There hasn't been anyone interested in the site since Bristol Myers decided to leave this community. So the building's gone. So the question now becomes, you know, again, much of the discussion has related to, you know, the impact on the neighborhood, and, you know, I think as part of the team that put together this project, the engineering firm looked at ways of making certain as best they could that there would be no impact on the residential neighbors, that this is part of your I X zone, this is Research Parkway, and this is your industrial park. Again, it's, you know, that fight must have been fought years ago when the town decided to zone this area, this particular zone, these were the sorts of uses that would have been contemplated. It's a hundred-and-eighty-acre piece, it's not your typical small piece where you get a, you know, ten or twenty thousand square foot building, you've got a hundred-and-eighty acres. You can see all the wetlands on the site from this slide behind you, and the difficulty of accessing it anywhere else on Research, that, you know, that would have been something that was considered, you know, well before I got involved in this project. They've been looking at, Site BL's been working on this project for well over a year. You know, at the end of the day, the empirical evidence before you has a planner that's recommending approval with certain conditions. She made an effort, a yeoman's, or yeoman's effort to put together a list of conditions of approval before she went on a medical leave, did that because she felt it important enough, you know, to do that for this commission, to indicate the things that she was concerned about, but also to indicate what conditions, if approved, would allow this- if approved, would allow this commission, they have a project that would be, that would protect the neighborhood and be a good positive development for the town. You have the Water and Sewer Division put together conditions of approval. Didn't recommend denial. They came up with a list. You have the town engineer coming up with a list of conditions of approval. Again, you don't have anyone recommending denial. The erosion sediment control and stormwater management through the wetlands process, which took a long period of time, and an independent peer review that was done by an engineer, he recommended approval. You know, so it's gone through, you've had an independent traffic reviewer review our traffic report. There has been no suggestion that the plan doesn't work, that the traffic generated from a site of this size without a specific tenant will somehow generate levels of service that would be diminished, that would somehow impact negatively the quality of the roadway system. You haven't, no one's given you any evidence of an objective empirical nature to suggest that the plan doesn't work. I mean, this has been designed for about a year to come to this point, and I realize it's your second shot at looking at it, and there's still perhaps in your mind other things for us to review and discuss. At the end of the day, you know, every effort is done to minimize the impact on the community, to improve, you know, and redevelop a site that has already been developed, but now its use is no longer needed or viable. And, you know, at the end of the day, when you have an I-X zone that abuts residential properties, you try to lift the proposed development area, you know, away from those residential houses, and you can see that it is, and you try to take those steps to minimize the impact on the neighborhood. I mean, again, I can't imagine that the distance from the roadway, the access points on Carpenter Lane down to Research, that there'll be much traffic, more traffic than there's there today, heading, taking right. There just will be nothing going up to that. It doesn't make any sense. This is a Research Parkway development. So you've got the I-X zone on Carpenter Lane. Again, if that should have been rezoned, that's something that hasn't happened. That's what the zone is today. We think the project meets all of the qualifiers of your special permit application. We've addressed all of the issues. We've, and let's talk about the monitor for a minute. I mean, there was some discussion about the monitor. If this is approved, one of the conditions that has been requested by the town engineer, by Water and Sewer, by the town planner and the environmental planner, interposed as a condition in the wetlands approval, was the hiring of an erosion sediment control implementation monitor. So this would be the monitor would make sure that during the course of construction, before the site is stabilized, that, that all of the bells and whistles that have incorporated into this plan will be handled appropriately by the contractor. They're talking about having iteration after iteration of protection. A significant bond, the bond established by Wetlands Commission was $319,000. I think you have a memo from Attorney Small indicating that the contemplation was to have one bond, hopefully from both P&amp;Z and the Wetlands Commission for the erosion control bond, like you did with Tractor Supply, where it could be, it'd take both commissions to be released. This independent monitor's function would be to make certain that all of the proper efforts are made during the course of construction, again, until the site is stabilized. I mean, these are, these are extraordinary expenses, but they're designed to give assurance because what I kept hearing from town staff was that we love the project, but we are nervous. We get nervous. We're concerned about our watershed. Legitimate concern. We're concerned about traffic. Legitimate concern. And so what the applicant's done is continued to try to find you, this town, independent consultants to review, experts to review our application. So you don't have to take our word for it, although we think it's a pretty good project. You have now independent parties whose interest is the same as yours, and they're telling you empirically and in their records that this works. So again, I do understand the visceral reactions. I hear it all the time, and I'm sensitive to it. But at the end of the day, you know, noise doesn't rise, it falls. Idling trucks, there's a three-minute maximum under Connecticut statute, I guess, I mean, it's a law, but that's what the law is. Your noise ordinance controls impulse noises and noise emission. So it covers both, both types of noise, impulse. And again, whether or not there'll be an operation of 24 hours, 24/7, that's a contemplation based upon the sort of Class A tenant you're looking for. There is no known tenant at this point. But this is, you know, the battle is really won about the zone, whether this is the proper location for the zone. I think that decision's been made by this town years ago. It's an I-X zone. We believe that, again, the use is a good use. It'll be a nice source for the grand list. It'll provide protections for the community. And we've taken each step along the way to try to ensure that we meet those requirements, that we, that we are a good neighbor. And I think before, you know, before we're there, before we've built, before we've, you know, pulled, pulled out one shovel of dirt, there's already the contemplation that somehow this won't be good. And that's not the, that's not been the drive and the goal of the applicant. We've been directed throughout the entire process to make certain that this, that this works. It works not only for them, but it works for the community. So that's been the goal, and that's how we've handled it, Mr. Chairman.
Bring it back to the commissioners. Any comments? Next steps? Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, before the meeting started, I went over and spoke to Amy because I was concerned, as I indicated in my comments, this is our second time seeing it, but it's been going through the town process. So again, Amy, if I understood correctly, they received the wetlands permit a week or so ago. And so we have 35 days to take action. And, and we heard at the beginning of last month, although that was at their request to start the process, even though they didn't have a wetlands permit, right? So that's why we only had two speakers last month, and we had 26 tonight. Is that, am I saying that right?
That's correct. And also, November 7th was the wetlands.
Wetlands. So if, if the decision was, because there was a lot of information presented this evening, if the, if the request is, and I'd certainly start with the, ask the chairman, but if we were to continue this by calendar, we could to our December meeting with their consent?
That's correct. I would, I would ask for the applicant's consent, but absolutely within 35 days by the, for the December meeting.
Okay.
Regular meeting.
And our December meeting is the 10th.
The 10th. Mr. Chairman, based upon just the sheer volume of stuff we received, and I, you know, this is like, you know, I'm sitting here scribbling, this is like, you know, 400 Dunkin' Donuts, or, you know, 40, it's 40 times the size of our regular application. I personally would like time to digest it, and I would like to probably keep the public hearing open and continue it. But again, that's just my opinion because I'm, you know, just the fact that there's just so much.
Other thoughts from commissioners? Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons. You know, you know, I think the residents brought up a few issues that we need to consider. And quite frankly, this is a very tough decision based on not knowing who is going in there. And, you know, it really kind of ties our hands into some of the questions we need to ask. But I understand, you know, we have to have the approval to get the warehouse built. And I will state for the record that I don't feel this is a truck terminal. You know, New England Motor Freight is a truck terminal. I, this, to me, fits the warehouse definition, so I will state that for the record. But, yeah, I think there's a couple of issues we need to, you know, chew on for the next meeting.
Yes, Mr. Hines.
Yeah, so my feeling is that that probably makes some sense to continue. I, I came in here thinking I was gonna vote one way, and I've heard some stuff tonight, and I'd like to be able to digest it and kind of go over some of the information that we were given again. So I think that would make some sense.
So what other information do we need?
I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I, for one, I, looking at this, I need, I would request between now and the next meeting, a currently signed and dated letter from each department head on any conditions of approval, any concerns, so to speak, last call. The fire marshal gave us a comment saying addressed. I mean, there was no other comments in there. Emergency access for fire, you know, engineering, Rob gave, Rob gave us comments. I know Amy Casey's out, but I think her comments were written in October. So much has changed, I think, or changed, you know, now that they have wetlands, there's just a lot of things to consider. So I guess I would be looking for fresh, through you, Mr. Chairman, fresh comments from the town department heads that have been reviewed, realizing they've been talking about it since June, but it's, it's, it's with us now, and it's different from what was presented in June.
I, you know, I mentioned earlier in the commentary where, you know, we, we do right now have a very large list of conditions of approval, and I'd like to see the, you know, whittled down list for next meeting. I understand many of those have been, you know, completed. And, you know, a couple of items the residents brought up, lighting, I think is something I don't recall really seeing on the plan, maybe, maybe have a lighting plan. And, one of the residents talked about a nationwide permit. I, I have no idea what that entails. That might be something that an environmental planner might be able to look at. I, I don't know if that's, you know, something we need to worry about. Sounds like that was a very old regulation, but, you know, just want to make sure we cover everything.
Any other commissioners? I would definitely agree. So we need to ask for consent to continue this from the applicant.
I've been given authorization to agree to the extension to your December meeting. I would like to ask a question though, Mr. Chairman, actually two questions. It's sort of house cleaning. One is, because I saw it in a comment from Casey, is mulch acceptable for interior landscaped islands? And I guess that may be something that you normally don't allow. I just, I wasn't familiar with that. So that was a question that she had in there, and I'm not sure where we're getting the answer from other than from the five of you. And then the other issue that's perhaps more important is the fact that the daycare power will be shut off.
Jeff Checkaway with PMRG. The daycare facility power that's fed from the central utility plant at Bristol Myers facility is being shut down by Bristol Myers, I believe on December 21st, which renders the daycare facility without power, without the ability to provide life safety, fire alarm systems, that type of thing. So there's a question about extending overhead lines as a, on a temporary basis to that child development center so we can not have the facility go dark and lose that building. So I think we're asking if we could do something tonight to allow us to proceed, or allow Wallingford Electric to proceed with the installation of those temporary poles, you know, to keep that building.
Didn't we talk about this last?
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I mentioned earlier that Wallingford Electric was, is willing to do that.
Right.
Temporarily.
Yeah. So if that's all we need is, you know, vote to allow them to do that in favor of doing that.
Do we have that from them?
Yeah, there's a memo.
From the electric?
Yes. Yep.
We have to vote on that, though?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, and I don't know who might be able to answer this, but let's, if the electric company puts up temporary lines and the commission were to deny the application, now we've got, now we've got temporary lines up to this daycare with a denied application, and how are those lines gonna come down? And are they gonna become permanently overhead lines when we have very clear regulations that underground lines are required for all new? So I'm not quite sure how that would work.
Mr. Hines, you were gonna say something?
No, I was gonna say, I think the last time that you were here, the question was, I think the proposal was that those lines weren't going to be temporary, but permanent overhead lines to the daycare. Now, I think the proposal is that they're gonna be temporary and ultimately placed under the road.
That's correct.
Am I correct about that?
That's correct. That's why Mrs. Hand, Mrs. Hand became more encouraged by that proposal as opposed to it being permanently overhead.
Yeah. And I would have absolutely no problem with that. But I do think that Steve brings up a very good point, which is that you could end up with temporary lines that could become permanent depending on the outcome of this application. And I don't know how we address that. I don't know if you have a proposal for that situation.
Push it back to the applicant.
Well, the daycare is, is there. You know, so again, at some point, the temporary lines would have to come down, or it would be, you know, the electricity would be provided with underground service. It's just that is, the contemplation is that you'd want to keep it open, and the way to keep it open is to have it fed with electricity.
You know, quite honestly, I think if, you know, the application was denied, I think this is something the town of Wallingford would just have to provide until, you know, the next application, the next tenant. I mean, this, this is kind of, for me, the cost of doing business. You know, it's a, it's a risk, you know, we're gonna have to eat.
I mean, sorry, unless there were a bond posted.
But, I mean...
Let's take a step back.
If I might, if I might, the snapshot here, if I understand correctly, from the end of the last meeting, because this is exactly how it came at the end of the last meeting, they currently, the daycare center currently gets its power from Bristol Myers. Yes?
Yes.
And that'll be done at the end of December. Yes?
Correct.
And the request of last month was, could they do temporary or overhead and blah, blah? And I think the discussion was, without a vote, was conceptually yes.
Correct.
But if we're not taking action tonight, I don't think there's anything we can do. Because...
Well, that's why.
Their power comes from Bristol Myers. That's not, that's not the town. That's Bristol Myers. That's, that's their, you know, and again, that's why I think, you know, and Amy knows me well enough, that's why I kept saying calendar, because we have, you know, as I mentioned, it's your second time before us. So I, I'm in favor of continuing it. I, I'm a father, I love kids, I just, I don't know about this daycare center because I think it is a problem for us because it keeps, you know, Bristol Myers is still open, that's up to, you know, Bristol Myers. You know, it, I don't, I don't want to be pushed on providing electrical on this because of this, because then you start down the rabbit hole. Am I alone?
No. So I don't even know if we have.
I don't have the motion. There's nothing to break.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we could, we could say yes or no on it anyway, till we get.
Mr. Chairman.
Till December 10th.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I'm prepared to make a motion to continue the public hearing to December 10th.
Do I hear a second? Any other?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, starting with Mr. Heinz?
Yes, to continue.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I hear you, but.
Yeah, we, we actually just continued it, so it's still public.
Sure. Yep, yep, absolutely.
If it's okay, I have a motion to take a five-minute break.
I move to take a five-minute recess.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye. We'll start back in five minutes.
Like to call the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Wednesday, November 14th back in the session. We are on new business, and we are on 8-24 Town of Wallingford, purchase of property, 33 North Cherry Street. And, Mr. Secretary, would you read in any of the correspondence?
Legal notice.
It's not a legal notice.
Isn't legal notice?
It's no legal notice. We'll just go by this.
No.
There is, would be a legal notice.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have a correspondence from the mayor to the Planning and Zoning Commission, received October 19th, 2018, with an attachment map.
All right. Amy? That's on you.
This one's on me. This, 33 North Cherry, I guess it is, it's considered as, is proposed for parking in line with the transit-oriented development. The town center new zone and the planning and zoning office would suggest that the commission recommend to the town council approval to purchase the property.
Mr. Baltramitis, anything? Any comments?
Comment as a resident, I think it's a good purchase for the town of Wallingford.
Okay. Any commissioners have any comments or questions? All right, hearing, oh, no, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, I'll make a comment. I am in favor of purchasing this parcel. However, I am not in favor of using this for parking. Hopefully, parking will be a short-term objective until some further development or developer comes and wants to more develop this piece of property. But I, I am in favor of the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heinz.
I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just echo Mr. Cohen's comments. You know, my hope is that the parking is a temporary use and that the, the town's intent is to potentially purchase the other buildings around this property so that we have a larger parcel to, to hopefully one day market to a developer and revitalize our lower downtown area. Thanks.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve under Connecticut General Statute 8-24 for the town of Wallingford, the purchase of property by the town of Wallingford, known as 33 North Cherry Street, as recommended by the town planning office and requested by the office of the mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Voting starting with Mr. Heinz. Yes to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Motion carries. All right, we are going to road acceptance. Docker drive extension serving the Knollwood Place subdivision, application 103-08. Any correspondence?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a memorandum to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission from the Department of Engineering dated November 2nd, signed by Robert Baltramitis.
Amy?
I'm going to volley this to Mr. Baltramitis.
Mr. Baltramitis.
Okay, so we're recommending that the public improvements be accepted by the town of Wallingford. So this was subdivision, it actually goes back to 2008, it was before this commission. So for commissioners who are new and been through this yet, the, the process for these roads that get accepted into our infrastructure is they get inspected by my office, by Public Works. We have, we, both Henry McCully and I signed a recommendation to this board. Your recommendation, if favorable, goes to the town council for them to ultimately accept the road into the, to the town's roadway network. I tried getting a jump on this because winter's coming, and this is usually when developers want to turn a road over for the snow plowing that they've been doing. So just trying to have a little foresight, get this one ready, and get it to you tonight.
So it gets approved tonight, they can plow tomorrow?
I don't think it's going to happen that fast. Developer might have to do one or two.
Any comments from the commissioners? If not, motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve the, accept the roadway and forward recommendations to the Wallingford Town Council to also accept docker drive extension into the town of Wallingford's network of public streets per Section V-J of the subdivision regulations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Voting starting with Mr. Heinz?
Yes to approve.
Yes.
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 And yes, motion carries. All right, Amy Bond releases.
Let's see, the first, I'm going to volley the first one, but I'll just say, the request for the release for 605 North Elm Street was contingent on both engineering and wetland sign-off last meeting, not ready. And I think Mr. Baltramitis can speak to where that stands now, ultimately.
Yeah, I, I don't think this one's ready. I think just a, a drive-by on North Elm Street. There's evidence of, of rilling that needs to be touched up and established. So it's just not ready at this point. And frankly, it may not be until the spring when grow vegetation.
Just number 10, right?
10's ready, right?
10's ready.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so jumping to number 10, we looked at that one, that's, that's ready to be released.
So just 10 is ready.
And number, number nine is ready to release as well. I inspected that site myself, the 231 Northford Road.
All right, so nine and 10 are, are ready for a release.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve the release of Bond being held for 231 Northford Road and 5-9 Barnes Industrial Road South, as recommended respectively by the Town of Wallingford Planning Office and the Town Engineering Department.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we go to administrative approvals, these all were, went through. How about the reports to the officers and staff for 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting schedule?
You should have received that meeting schedule and just a note for you all that they were double-checked and triple-checked for any conflicts with any holidays or observance of any events, so.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Seiker.
We have to vote, he's seen them?
Yeah, I believe he's seen them and was good with it. So just so you know as well, we can approve that or not this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve the 2019 schedule of meetings for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission, as proposed by the planning office.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. All right. ZBA decisions of October 15th.
Okay. October ZBA meeting had three approvals, a variance request for a change in some landscaping descriptions on, one of the frontage on Capital Drive at 122 North Plains Industrial Road. It was just a slight tweaking when they straightened out some, some parking spaces. They lost a little bit of landscaping, gained it in other areas. Building coverage of silliness of 0.1%. There was a storage pad at Aldi at the Coles Plaza here in Wallingford. They wanted to enclose it, so it threw the plaza's building coverage off by a tenth of a percent. That was approved. And again, another lack of landscaping on Penn Highway was approved. At number eight, Penn Highway, there's basically no front yard area at all, and they requested no landscaping be provided at all. I do believe that they were conditioned to provide some, along building frontage as a, as an alternative. What else do we got here?
We have the legal notice.
Legal notice for, for November. We have one, the first item on here has already been withdrawn for a side yard variance of 2.26 feet. The, there's two remaining and one that's being carried over. The two remaining for infomettals, they're looking to cover one of their crane bays on Penn Highway, which, there's one covered already. This is looking for an additional one to get some coverage affecting building coverage as well. And also Roland Technologies at 320 N 340 Barnes Road by reconfiguring the parcel, which cannot be merged at this point, and adding a building addition. They're asking for a building coverage and a reduction in the parking requirements. And the zoning enforcement officer sits before you, has not updated her database. So this looks exactly like you did, saw last month. There has been activity, but certainly reduced in Casey's absence, but unfortunately, it's not reflected in our logs because they're not caught up. So we're going to have a big push when she gets home. I'm going to be busy the first of the year with the catching up on all that, but that, that's sort of taking a little slide so we can tend to. Thanks for now.
Thank you very much. Any commissioners have anything? Just to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Won't see you until December.
Likewise.
Do I have a motion to close?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.